For those of you who are new, we have three emergency exits. If there happens to be an emergency here in Town Hall, we will exit either through the door you just came in. There is one behind your left shoulder in a back corner of the room, and also one behind Mr. Reese. If there is an emergency, please get up orderly and exit. We'll go across the street to the school department building and wait for further instructions from our first responders. Now, all of those who are able, please join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women in harm's way. Thank you, everyone. Adam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Gleason?
Here.
Ms. Blank?
Here.
Ms. McDowell?
Here.
Ms. Patton?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
I am here. Thank you very much. Uh, there is no executive summary. We did have a meeting, uh, executive session last meeting, but I did report out afterwards. Uh, there were no votes taken during that executive session. We have an existential agenda with bills to pay. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any questions on the bill? Sorry. All those in favor, you have a question?
No, I addressed him with Caleb Price.
Oh, perfect. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Next sitting is the Board of License Commissioners. We have a request for a permanent expansion of a service area for Graphics Coffee. Uh, at 2005 East Main Road, they would like to be able to serve alcohol outside on their 20 by 30 patio area that is east of the building.
Motion open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. If anybody would like to speak, uh, either in favor or against Graphics Coffee being able to serve, um, alcohol beverages along with their coffee beverages outside, please come up to podium. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
I just need your name and address for the record and pull that down a little bit for me. There you go.
Hello?
You just gotta talk straight into the top of it.
Okay, this makes me a little nervous. My name's Kelly Lemur and I live on Cager Lane, which is behind Graphics. And just so you know, Cager Lane is a very wonderful street to live on. We have a great neighborhood. We support each other with babies and in mourning. And they take care of me, the little old lady on the street. I would much prefer that we not have outdoor drinking so close to my street, on my street. And, um, one reason, uh, is because we have five little children on the street. It's a, it's a family neighborhood. And I don't, I don't wanna bring up the image of our Attorney General's office to our minds too closely, but I think that's a pretty good example of why keeping drinking inside and minimizing alcohol in neighborhoods, um, would be to everybody's benefit. We have Ragged Island. Is that, that's the name of it? I saw somebody's sweatshirt. And, um, that place over across from Teddy's Beach, you can drink outside at those two places. You can drink outside across the street from Sea Meadow. There's a, a bed and breakfast that sometimes has parties. And everybody can drink outside on their porch. They don't have to be drinking outside in my backyard. I would imagine that we'd have to have more police presence. Might cost a little bit more money. I hope we'd have more police presence. Uh, the, the idea of people pull, having been drinking and then pulling out onto East Main Road is terrorizing. What else don't I like about it? I, that, that about, that covers as much as I can think of right now. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your testimony.
Um, I don't know if there's, is, is there anybody to whom I should address a sort of begging, please vote against this? Please?
That'd be the seven of us.
The seven of you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else, either for or against? And as a council, we also have the ability to put stipulations on it in terms of hours. Um, that is allowable. Uh, it is, to me, it's not gonna be, it's, it's certainly not gonna be an all-night situation like Joe's Bar used to be, which used to be there before you.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I just addressed my, oh.
Name and address for the, yes.
My name's Josh Whalen, uh, to Attleboro Ave, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. Um, I'm the owner of Graphic Coffee.
If you could just get a little closer to the mic.
Yep, yeah, of course. I'm the, uh, owner of Graphic Coffee. I as well am a member of this community. I have three young children of my own. Um, I def, I'm hearing what you're saying. I highly respect everything you just said. Um, we're not trying to be a bar. Um, you know, with this expansion, we're just hoping to, you know, open some, you know, opportunities for, to have some, you know, small little, you know, events during the day to allow some, you know, like perhaps like a little business meeting, just to open up our opportunities. We were granted the liquor license. We haven't, you know, had, you know, a lot of success with it. And we're just trying to open up some new avenues for us to, um, offer to the community. Um, and as, you know, a member of the community myself, I think that, um, it would be a nice opportunity for, uh, you know, local businesses to have a place, to have a nice gathering place. Um, you know, we're gonna keep, we, we're never open past, uh, 8:30 PM even now with our current liquor license. Um, we've had no, you know, we have no issues. We're, we're managing the, the alcohol and the consumption of it obviously very responsibly. And, um, you know, we're addressing everything with all of your concerns as we go forward. We really are very respectful of our community. Um, again, as a member myself. So I just wanted to, you know, stand up here and, um, you know, address the, you know, and rebut, you know, her concerns and just hopefully alleviate some of those concerns as well. Um, and, you know, again, I'm always there. If you, if you ever wanna come over and have any, you know, conversations about it, we're also always willing to have those conversations. Um, so that, that's all I wanted to say, but thank you.
And the council also has, the council also has the ability to, uh, the request is a permanent. We could do it as a one-year trial if we wanted to, to see how everything goes. And if there's no issues, then we can look at doing it permanently in the future as well.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever you're all more comfortable with. I mean, again, we're just trying some new things. We're, um, you know, we're a growing business. It's just, this is, you know, everything I have. And I'm just trying to look for new ways to generate new revenue. Um, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before the owner leaves, uh, is it just a beer and wine you serve? Or is it mixed drinks and?
Yeah, so we have, um, the option for, we have a small cocktail menu with a cup, like an espresso martini. We do make our own coffee there. And that's sort of, you know, the, a, a draw. I mean, that we hoped it would be. Um, uh, so, but we aren't looking to, again, we're not looking to become a bar. We're, I'm not looking to expand with some big, you know, cocktail, um, you know, huge parties or bands or anything. Um, but we do have, uh, some liquor, uh, options on the menu as well as just some beer and wine.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Mr. McDowell?
Um, Joshua, how late are you open every night till 8:30? Or certain nights?
Yeah, currently, we're just operating Friday and Saturdays. Um, with the liquor license, uh, we present a new menu on the tables from, essentially from four till 8:30. Um, you know, we're usually locked up and out the door by nine. Um, and we've, you know, we have, uh, inside, we have some nights, we have some live acoustic just from six to eight AM, uh, 8:00 PM. And that wraps up. And it's, it's just, it's been a very, um, it's been very nice, the nights that some, that people do show up. It seems like it's a really good, you know, contribution to the community with, you know, providing a nice, safe space and, um, to grab a, you know, a drink before going out to dinner or something.
Yep. I, I think, um, your establishment is a wonderful place. It's, it's a nice addition to Portsmouth. So with this liquor license, would it extend beyond the Friday and Saturday? Uh, do you envision that or just during the summer or what? What?
Yeah, so I, I don't have any expectations or visions of it becoming more than just a weekend thing. I mean, it's all, my, you know, I'm already stretching myself. Uh, I'm there all the time. Like, I'm not trying to, uh, run a restaurant that's open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. I just don't have that bandwidth. Um, I just think on the weekends, it's a nice place for our community to go out and have a little, like, drink or aperitif or, you know, it's a couple, little appetizer. We also serve little small plates and flatbread pizzas. Um, so it's a ni, you know, again, a nice place to just stop quickly before going out to all the other great establishments in this town.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions for the council? Any other? Yep.
I just have a, a question for the last speaker. Um, if, have you experienced any problems thus far with what they have been operating under right now?
Um, ma'am, you need to come to the microphone?
Yeah, just so everybody can hear you here and at home.
To be a good neighbor, Josh. Um, but I, I can hear the music and stuff on weekends.
Yeah.
So, and more people walk through. So Graphics is here and there's a big lot. And, and more people walk through now. Um, you know.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the audience? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Um, again, Josh, since I don't anticipate any issues with your establishment, but because this is a first-time request, it would be my request to this council to do it as a one-year trial basis. And if there's no issues next year, we should be good to go after that, if that's okay. I also request you continue to make that really good gluten-free banana bread.
Uh, I wouldn't. I give all the credit to my wife for that. Thanks.
Any questions from council? The, the council needs to make a motion of some sort, yes.
Before you do, uh, are there any concerns about people leaving the establishment with a drink in hand? I mean, do we have any fencing or whatever around the property that we need to be concerned with and discuss?
There's, there's no fencing around the entire property.
I can speak to that. So currently, the outdoor patio is enclosed with, um, not like a full fence, but it has a nice retaining wall with beautiful flowers that we've, you know, it's grown over the last year and a half. We've done really nice work out there. Um, you know, I, I submitted an email today because I do recognize there's about 10 feet gap from one of the exit doors to get to the patio. Um, that is sort of open right now. It was like, you know, there's no straight path, really. Um, so I proposed in the email, the, like, defining that with more, with like an actual pathway with planters and rope, so that all liquor that's purchased inside, if they wish to go outside, they're gonna exit through this one particular door that's gonna have clear markings and, and, and barriers. And, you know, there's gonna be no question that they're not allowed to go. We'll post signs that they have to walk to the patio. Um, so, uh, they're, currently, it's, we're very close to being, it being in a good si, like, you know, like it's already enclosed. But it's just that one little section from the door to the patio that's, uh, I have drawn up plans and I will complete that as, you know, in a, whatever amount of time that you guys would expect that to be done. But, you know, I'll be building it myself, essentially. You know, it's just like some, putting out some planters and rope and posts and stuff.
I, I guess my concern, uh, it, it sounds like you've addressed it. Uh, we just, you don't wanna see a facility that le, allows you the ability to take your drink to your car and leave. Um, so that's my concern there. Do we feel comfortable moving forward without having the plans? Or can we postpone this to another, to the next meeting?
The planters are in place. This is a different set of planters he's gonna build out differently. So that, I mean, the main, in my mind, the main reason for the planters is that somebody doesn't drive into the patrons.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that somebody walks out. I, I do share your concern that somebody can walk out, but, um, that could happen at every other establishment that has a outdoor license.
Well, most of them do have some type of fence, you know, whether it be, uh, locals or?
Well, that's the same type of fence he's proposing it, that locals has.
Okay. I, I have not seen the emails, so I don't know.
Mr. President, you could, the, the council could make the motion contingent upon completion of that delineation of the walkway. And that way, he does it at his pace. And, and when he's done, he can start taking advantage of the approval.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
To be inspected by whom? Planning, planning staff?
I think it's just if it's a, if it's discovered that he didn't abide by that, then he's back in front of you.
Okay.
Do you want to make a decision, Dave?
Mr. President, I just, one more question. Will there be signage outside, um, indicating what the parameters are of the alcohol leaving the area?
Yeah, of, of course. Um, so currently, there's a sign on both doors that says no alcohol outside. And I did that because I understood the rules and the laws. Um, and just as such, when this new rule goes into effect that I'm allowed out to the patio, I will adjust the signage. And there will be ample signage that indicates, you know, where alcohol's allowed, where it's, um, you know, where it's not. Um, and I'm, and I'm perfectly fine with, you know, um, doing the work first, coming back, showing through pictures, maybe just like, you know, I'll send another email and we can do this again. Um, I'm not really in any rush to do it. Again, this is more kind of planning for, you know, next summer and hopefully getting some, you know, events outside. You know, it's, it's about to become winter. I am not gonna be, people aren't gonna be sitting outside. So I mean, I'm happy to work on your timeline and make sure that everything is up to, you know, what's the expectations of, of the, the council, you know? So.
And other questions? Mr. Perry?
I didn't have a question. I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I motion that we, uh, permit the expansion to the service area, uh, contingent on the construction of the wall and provide a sunset of October 31st of next year.
Second.
Would you consider adding to your motion that it's Fridays and Saturdays only? That's what you're requesting, correct?
Well, those are our current operating hours. I, if, I wouldn't necessarily wanna be confined to that only because, you know, if we did have the opportunity to have, you know, a small event in the afternoon on a weekday for, you know, a staff party or something, you know, the, you know, the, the, the evening thing, I, I understand. But if there's, um, I just don't, I would, I would hope not to necessarily confine myself to that Friday, Saturday, just for that. I'd, 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 um, you know, I'm hoping for, to open up some opportunities and potentially, if there's, you know, like, I'm really just envisioning sort of like little corporate gatherings where they can hang and I can, you know, have the patio just for them. And, you know, sometimes those don't necessarily fall on weekends. So I would hope that, uh, I wouldn't be limited by that. But I, again, I'm always, I'm, I'm at the.
I, I only brought it because that's the way you describe what you're looking for. And it seems to be a happy medium with your neighbor.
Yeah.
Um, that it isn't any day randomly when you wanna do it, so to speak, kinda limits your hours. And, you know, if we're gonna do it for a year, you could come back after a year and say, I want more hours. Here's what I've done over the last year. We haven't had any problems, et cetera. So.
To, to your question, no, I would not amend one because of what, uh, German just said. But we also don't require that of any other outdoor establishment in, in the town. So I just think that would just be an unfair advantage to him being able to do business in town.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. So you've got till October 31st of 2026. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you very much.
We also have a peddler's license for a mobile food establishment for IVA LLC doing business as Schwammer Giros or Giros.
Giros.
Yeah, two that way. 13 Mystic Street, Providence.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. President, we have to go back and close the public hearing.
Oh, yes.
But we already did it. Oh, we did?
Okay.
I need more coffee.
Have you seconded it?
Now you just had a.
Motion to. Look in motion to adjourn as a board of license.
That would be.
Mission, yes.
Okay. Do we want to second that?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have minutes from the 8:25 meeting and also the executive session that followed afterwards. Any questions on the minutes? No?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. And we have tax vouchers for 2025-09-08-01 and 2025-09-08-02. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve as, as presented.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Town administrators report. Mr. Rayner?
I give you, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, state legislation passed in 2024 requires mandatory electronic permitting for all planning and zoning applications by October 1st of this year. So the planning department has been working with Rhode Island Department of Business Regulation staff to migrate to an electronic platform and went live with an electronic submission system last Tuesday, September 2nd, a month ahead of schedule. So now, all new planning applications will now be submitted via the OpenGov platform. And, uh, this is all updated on the town's website. Uh, and they're happy to walk you through it. Additionally, I need to also note that the building office permitting system will be down from the end of business this Friday, uh, the 11th through Sunday, the 14th, so over the weekend. Now, the planning department is in the final stages of transitioning from the PermitLink building application platform that the town has used since 2017 to, also to OpenGov. Uh, all historical data and current permits, building, mechanical plumbing, et cetera, will be uploaded to the new server during the transition. Uh, so all building permits will be issued on the new system starting Monday, the 15th, uh, when all the appropriate links will be live and updated. With respect to the FY '25 audit, uh, 60% of the documentation requested has been submitted. Uh, so our auditor, Hag and Sahadi, are continuing their fieldwork and Nyheart is compiling prior actuarial files. Our anticipated timeline for issuance of the draft financial statements remains on track for late fall. Um, in preparation for their move to the Ode Bithune House later this year, the Portsmouth Senior Center will hold an indoor yard sale and fundraiser this coming Saturday, the 13th. The onsite parking will be available at the Senior Center and overflow parking will be available at Ragged Island Brewing Company. Uh, this will be a cash and carry event and will be held from 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM, rain or shine. Um, with regard to transfer station and curbside sticker sales, uh, Prudence Island, 92, uh, 436 eligible households have signed up. And with respect to, uh, the mainland, as they call it, uh, the Headley Street Transfer Station has 2,000 signups and Curbside has 3,172. So that means that there are 5,172 households of 6,566 eligible households. So in other words, 100 and, uh, 1,394 households still have not signed up for either, uh, transfer station or Curbside. Regarding Curbside, it is important that bins are placed at the curb the night before, but no later than 6:00 AM on the collection day, leaving at least two to three feet of space between the bins. Now, we ask that residents, please keep the bins curbside until they're emptied. Those trash and recycling carts, uh, may be collected at different times by different trucks. When we do receive calls regarding missed collections, we review the video, uh, that's taken. Uh, there is a video system on all the trucks. Uh, we do review the ver, video for verification. And almost all recent complaints have been traced to bins that have not been placed at the curb in time for pickup. Uh, so they do, uh, they do show up early in the morning. You need to get your bins out either the night before or by 6:00 in the morning. We also, uh, recently received notice from the Rhode Island Recovery Resource Corporation that a Portsmouth recycling load, uh, was recently rejected in full uh, due to contamination. This rejection caused, is caused by excessive bagged materials, plastic film, and non-recyclables. So in other words, people are putting plastics, uh, plastic bags, uh, usually filled with trash into the recycling bins, putting recycling on top of it, so it's not noticed by the trucks. Uh, and it gets, uh, once it gets to RYREC, it's too late. The bins or the load is rejected. So the rejection, uh, as a result, uh, the town is assessed a $250 handling fee in addition to disposal charges, uh, at the municipal solid waste rate. Um, so that does, uh, count against our cap. So just, everyone needs to remember that trash must never be mixed in with recycling and that plastic bags, plastic film, and other non-recyclables should never be placed in recycling bins. And then lastly, uh, the 11th Annual Police Department Awards and Promotion Ceremony, this is just another polite reminder, uh, will be held Wednesday, September 24th, 6:00 PM, at the Glenn Manor House. Uh, this is an annual ceremony that recognizes uh, the Police Department Promotions and their accomplishments over the previous year. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Mr. Reese, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Rayner, um, I've got a couple of questions received on the condition of the Monho Bridge. And I'm being called to ask when it's gonna be done. They, apparently, after it was carpet bombed, they gathered up all the small holes and made several big holes, big bumps. This, the expansion joints are incredible. And everybody says, well, when are they gonna fill those with rubber strips or something? Is that done? I mean, if it is, people don't like it. You've been over, you've been over, right?
No, I haven't.
Oh, you ought, oh, you ought to.
As, as it stands right now, as far as I could tell, they are done.
I will pass that concern on to, um, the director of the Rhode Island.
Well, it isn't the way they said it was gonna be, which is gonna be much smoother.
Well, it's much smoother, but you have.
You ought to try going over it in an old truck. It's got the fillings out of your teeth.
I, I went over it the first night and noticed that they had the expansion joints. I was hopeful that.
No, but I mean, it's the point where people are just laughing about it.
I'll be happy to pass it on.
Okay. The other thing is an engineer, that shock in the bridge, every single time you go over one of those joints, you're banging every one of those expansion joints every single time, and that can't be good for the structure. And I'm surprised they left it like that, but okay.
Mr. Gleason?
Mr. Rayner, the, the load that was not accepted, was that on, that was on a curbside pickup?
Correct.
And any, any idea of the amount of weight that one of those trucks holds?
I'd have to pull the report, I may have it here.
I just have no feel for that at all.
I don't have the report with me, but I could pass that on to the council tomorrow, but it was a full truckload. There were tons of pictures taken. And it's exactly as I described, people are taking their plastic trash bags and putting them into the recycling bins. The truck drivers aren't noticing this, and it's not noticed by the camera because when the truck lifts up the bin, they're only seeing the recyclables on the top, right? But then when it gets to R I rec and the loadmasters or the loaders are checking
Sure.
The, the load.
It's not, it's not the truck's, and it's not MIGA's responsibility, it's our citizens that are responsible for that recycling.
Yeah, now the truck drivers are pretty vigilant, as well as our waste diversion manager. But there's three thousand bins out there to be looked at.
Sure.
So there are people in town that have been notified the correct way to dispose of their waste and the recyclables. There is a sticker on every single recyclable bin. There was material handed out with every application. And i- if somebody does not comply and is unwilling to comply, then the truck driver, if he notices it, or the diversion manager, if he notices it, they'll sticker the bin, notifying them of a potential violation or a violation. And once it's rectified, they'll, they'll get their, their waste picked up.
Thanks.
Any further questions? All right. Hearing done, we're going to move on to old business number one, which is request to bring disc golf course to Portsmouth with this
President.
Of resignation, Mr. Adams, who just got on the Parks and Recreation Committee, but good luck in your future endeavors, going up to New Hampshire, I believe it was?
Motion received, Mr. Adams for resignation with regret.
Second.
All those in favor?
Excuse me?
Yep.
I, yeah. I just have a question. So I was at the Park and Rec meeting in June when it was announced that he had sent an email with his resignation. We're just getting a letter now in September, and I was just wondering, did the email ever get sent over?
No.
So can we get a copy of that email from the chair?
It's on the backup.
No, you sent, this is the letter.
I got, I forwarded you the email that I got. That was.
I never saw a name email. I saw a letter of resignation only.
Well, that's all I, what you have is what I got.
Okay, I'm just asking for, there was a email sent to the chair that he mentioned at the meeting back in June. I'm just looking to see if we can get that email because this letter is like September, just.
Well, sometimes, sometimes people mention, this is not speaking to this, but sometimes what happens is they tell somebody that they're going to be resigning and they're told that they need to send a letter to us for the council, and we don't get that until whenever. That's just how it goes with.
A resignation doesn't take effect until it comes to the council.
That's okay. Can we, can I still request the email that was sent to the chair? If you can send it to us, or I don't know, from you or?
That would come from the, the request would go to the chair.
Is the chair, did you hear it?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to get you up.
David Fiorillo, forty-five, Hamilton Drive. So he did send me an email in June, and I responded back to him saying that he had to send it to the town clerk. And then he moved away, and then only when it was brought back up, then I sent it to Jen. So.
So you said he sent you an email in June, and then when it was brought up, you sent it to the clerk?
I told, I responded back to him saying it would need, you would need to send it to Jen to resign for resignation, and he didn't. And then I, when I think it was somebody asked like, hey, is he gonna, are we gonna, I don't know if it was you during the meeting saying, what's going on? I said, I'll have to send it to Jen, and then I didn't. But he was already gone at that point.
So who wrote the letter?
What letter?
Mr. Epps.
The letter that was.
Well, I didn't write, I didn't write his letter of resignation, he wrote his own letter. Why would I write his letter?
That's what I'm trying to ask, you know, we got a letter.
Yeah, from him.
Will you forward me your email? That's all I'm asking.
Or what, what, what are you looking for?
The email that you mentioned at the, at the committee meeting that he resigned.
Okay.
So I'm asking you to send me a copy of that email, please.
We'll look for it.
Thank you.
That work?
That'll work.
I don't know what the confusion is. Okay, yeah. Perfect.
I just have a question.
Sure.
I mean, this, this letter here isn't dated?
I, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's not, it's not dated. So Jen, did you? Sometimes you stamp it? And it's not, when did you?
It was just emailed to us, so then we printed it out and put it to the backup.
I just think that if an email comes in with a resignation, it should be either forwarded to the clerk.
Yeah.
And this opening then becomes open and we can advertise to fill that position. I think that's very, very important.
And you can still advertise for it.
Yeah, but.
It hasn't been filled.
In June.
The position is not open until we accept, we accept the resignation.
I don't.
If the clerk didn't have.
I, I asked him to send his letter of resignation to Jen. If he didn't, I can't tell.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo.
Thank you.
We've beaten this horse enough.
Thank you.
If you, if you find the email, please send it to towncouncil@portsmithrai.gov. All those in favor of accepting resignation with regret? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now, Mr. Gleason, thank you for correcting me. We can go on to old business number one.
I, I was just going to suggest whether there was a flavor here among the councils to do the, let the school people escape and let do new business one first. Any feel for that before I make a motion?
I agree.
I, I make a motion to place, to go forward with new business one prior to the old business one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We also had a request if we could potentially do the number two prior to they let the prevention people go home as well.
Correct.
But then we'd be doing all of new business, but.
I'll entertain that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
What, what is, what are we doing here?
We're going to do new business, new business, new business is one and two. And then we'll go back to old business number one.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I don't think, number two is not very heavy lifting either.
We have a motion in a second.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Superintendent Debrados, are you going to let Chris do all the talking?
No, no problem.
You've got kids to teach in the morning, so to speak. How about an update on how the first week of school went?
The first week of school went very well, very smooth. Minus that unfortunate bus accident with no children luckily on, on the bus on Friday. But no, it's been a great transition, quick roof update, if you would like.
I would love it, I was going to ask you about.
I figured you were, and I figured that you were. So we are, hopefully by the end of this week, the outside should be completely done. The interior, we're still doing a few different things. All of the ceiling tiles have been replaced. We're working on some sheet rock areas now as well. So after this week has passed, we'll walk through and have some sort of punch list, and then, yeah, this should be great.
No issues with the rain from yesterday?
No issues that were reported to me.
Awesome.
Yeah. All right, excellent. Well, thank you, I appreciate us coming up a little bit earlier. So good evening, everyone, and thanks for this opportunity to share a brief update on our school facilities' planning process. On June twenty-third, Dr. Kenworthy provided the council with an overview of the schedule of stages that will be followed as we navigate our next five-year capital plan. At that point, signatures were obtained to move forward with stage one application, which is due to be submitted to R I, no later than September fifteenth. Tonight's presentation is an informational overview of stages one and two. No vote is required by the council tonight. Right, next slide, please. Great. Stage one of the R I process is the entry point for identifying district needs and confirming eligibility for state reimbursement. So far, the district has completed facilities assessments, including educational spaces, building systems and structural conditions, along with required data collection and planning work. We're also prioritizing community engagement. I'll be at all of the school open house events throughout the month of September to share information on past projects, explore possibilities for upcoming projects and gather feedback from families and residents on their thoughts about next steps. The display boards out in the hall will be used during these events to reference the work that we have completed and explore future projects. Next slide. So looking ahead at stage two of this process, it'll involve developing detailed project plans, including cost estimates, timelines, design considerations, and it'll provide an opportunity for continued community engagement and input. Engaging our community is an essential part of this planning process. Gathering input from our families, staff and residents ensures that the design reflects the needs and the priorities of those that it'll serve. We'll continue working with our district building committee, architects and engineers to design innovative building plans and cost estimates, which will help us set a project budget. Once we have a proposed project budget and plan, we will come back here to the town council for the approval of stage two submission to the school building authority. Submission to R I is due, for stage two is due no later than February fifteenth. So with me this evening, I have our finance director, Chris Dioro, who's been a key player in all of the past projects, and he'd be happy to help support me in answering any questions that you may have.
So I'm going to try and use non-R I.
Sure.
Mumbo jumbo. Stage one, the school department has gone through with their consultant and developed a gigantic wish list. Stage two, we work on whittling that down to see what we can fit within a budget, what makes sense, what needs to be done right away and what can wait two, three, four, five, six years.
Absolutely.
Having the five-year plan allows us to be in line for getting refunded at a higher ratio, or rebated by a higher ratio from the state. Not having a plan means that we get stuck in a situation like the roof at the high school when we only get less money.
Correct.
So we're at stage one, we're a wish list, it's done by Phil. It's.
And we are ready.
Thousand pages long.
Yep. And we're ready to submit, and then we can move forward to stage two and really start developing our project plans, which is a pretty exciting part of it.
That narrows it down to the definite needs.
Yep.
The nice to haves and the wants. Okay. Any questions for the superintendent or finance director?
I just want to clarify the date, the stage one was due?
The fifteenth of September.
Of this month, okay. Any exciting projects you could share with us that you're thinking about? Or is it too early to tell?
Well, I mean, I think that we can review some of them. I, we've been looking at the spaces, I was a part of all of those walkthroughs, and we really would like to highlight our science labs at both the middle school and the high school. We feel that we're definitely a STEM-driven district, and our hope is to continue that work. And our current spaces are very outdated, especially at the middle school. So that's one innovative, exciting project. I certainly want to have conversations on the middle school roof so that we are not in the same situation that we were in this past spring with the high school roof.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Payer?
If I could just piggyback on the vice president's questions, are, given we were involved in the planning, well, bomb planning a bunch of years ago.
Yep, the last.
Many moons ago and pre-pandemic, are we resurrecting any of those plans? Because I know a lot of it was modernizing the layout, especially at the middle school to make it more conducive to twenty-first century learning.
So we're thinking that at our community gatherings, we certainly can reflect back on those plans. But I feel like it's a great opportunity for us to really start just kind of thinking of different possible ideas. But yes, we'll have those as well.
Any other questions, Ms. McTell?
So the September fifth is simply a letter of intent.
September fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I mean, and, and so simply a letter of intent. And from that, you'll have the focus groups.
Yes.
School committee, et cetera, to, to brainstorm and work with you as to what your project will be or what the items.
Like the upcoming months.
Yes, yeah.
So I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on that. So a letter of intent has already been submitted that was due in July. That just lets the school building authority know that we plan on submitting a stage one and a stage two.
Okay.
Stage one is, is due September fifteenth. So, and that, that's basically a wish list of all the things that are wrong with the school. Then we go into stage two, and we try to whittle that down into something that's manageable and we can fund and budget for.
Okay, so the, the September fifteenth is, is a submission of the many projects you want to tackle.
It's a submission, so essentially we've had architects and engineers going through all of our schools for the last month or so. They're putting together, as Mr. Hamilton said, basically a wish list of everything ranked, you know, number one needs to be done immediately, two, three, four, five, you know, within the next ten years. That body of work is then, through the stage two process, prioritized and put into a five-year capital plan. It's obviously not going to be everything they have identified. And that's when we come back and ask, after all the community work is done, we ask the town council to support that by voting, to support the submission.
So you must have that list pretty well developed at this point, correct?
We do. And it'll be part of our submission.
Will we get a copy of that submission?
We can provide a copy to the town administrator, sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update, and bathrooms are done?
Bathrooms are done, both sets, yeah.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
So that finishes out the last bond of twenty. Fantastic.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, we have a, we're going to open a public hearing for a proposed amendment to our codification of ordinance, chapter eighty-nine, alcohol beverages to include cannabis-infused beverages, and we're also known as T H C. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Georgie Cranston, and I serve as the coordinator of the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition. I'm here tonight to respect, respectfully request an amendment to our current ordinance on public consumption of alcohol, chapter eighty-nine, to also include cannabinoid-containing beverages commonly called THC-infused drinks. So without clear ordinance language, we create a loophole. Public consumption becomes difficult to enforce, and it gives the impression that these products are harmless. In reality, one can contain multiple servings of THC, and the lack of oversight increases risk of overconsumption and misuse. Updating our ordinance is about keeping Portsmouth, Portsmouth's public spaces safe, family-friendly, and consistent with the prevention values our community cares about. It's also about being proactive and keeping pace with the new product showing up in our town. On behalf of the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition, I respectfully urge the council to update chapter eighty-nine to include THC-infused beverages, protecting the health and safety of our residents. I wanted to answer some questions that arose last time. So one of the questions was, do other cities or towns in Rhode Island have a similar ordinance? Not yet. Currently, no municipality in Rhode Island has enacted an ordinance targeting the public consumption of THC beverages. State law only restricts public smoking or vaping of cannabis, not drinking it. At the state level, regulations are still in progress. As of July twenty-twenty-five, the Rhode Island Cannabis Control Commission has paused issuing retail licenses for these drinks until a study on regulation is complete. Existing state rules require THC beverages to be resalable and cap them at five milligrams of THC per container, with a maximum of one milligram per serving. To put this in perspective, that's like buying a beer but being told you can only take one sip before sealing it back up. The rules are awkward, the products are confusing, and enforcement is unclear. So the problem today is that Science Head has advanced to extract and concentrate THC from hemp, the loophole, the farm bill. Even though hemp itself is low in THC, companies can process it, process it into beverages that are psychoactive, essentially giving us cannabis drinks sold outside of dispensaries. By addressing this now, Portsmouth has an opportunity to close the loophole, strengthen prevention and set an example for other Rhode Island communities. Thank you.
Okay, so currently in Portsmouth, you can't drink a beer on the beach, you can't smoke any marijuana or cigarette or cigar on the beach or vape on the beach. We're just adding another hallucinogenic beverage not to be allowed on the beach.
Correct.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment for or against the change? See anybody online? Going once, going twice? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion to approve the change in the ordinance of chapter eight, eighty-nine, alcohol beverages to include cannabis-infused beverages?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Georgia, thank you very much. Chip? Okay. That's everything we need to do until we get to old business number one now.
Yes.
All right. Request to bring a disc golf course to Portsmouth with support of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Mr. Dubay. It is Dubay, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How are we doing, Rodrick Dubay, Seven Grain Terrace, Portsmouth, Rhode Island? So where we left off last time, the town council requested, okay, well, town council requested that we design two new layouts for consideration. We've got those layouts with us today, we'll get into that in just a few moments. I think we've touched everything to minimize the chances of errantess going into the road, avoid traversal over the stone walls, remove the baskets from the fields by the manor house, also known as Sacred Heart Field, work with the residents about their concerns and utilize different fields to achieve the above. I think we've touched upon all those before, and we've done that with the new layout. So a few things, it was brought to my attention that there is still some confusion about what a disc golf is, a disc golf course is, excuse me. It is not a private enterprise, it's owned by the town, D P W, Parks and Rec. It is, no one person is going to be making any money out of, of this, other than the town. All revenue will be put towards the Glenn Park and revitalizing things there that need to be done there. We're not using. We're not using any taxpayer funds to build, operate the course. Glen's already up kept by the town. The disc golf course is not permanent. We actually met with DPW on a walk around the other day and we came to the agreement that, you know, how we install these and the um installation of them and what's uh involved in that. That is no way permanent. They can be easily removed from the the ground, uh grass seed put there and like it was never there before. I also got to meet the caretaker of the manor house during this walk through. He actually brought some things to my attention. One of them was the trees all in front of the manor house where we had a proposed hole uh put in. There's a lot of uh dead limbs hanging there. Um, the ground is just, it's been uncapped. And also the beautiful beechwood trees we have there all are diseased apparently and there's no funding to fix this. Um, also things we noticed in our walk around was uh the bridge, getting off the bridge, there was a step that, you know, had been put up to the bridge. So when you walk off the bridge, you have a step to step down onto the field with. That step has fallen off its uh foundation, if you will, and is on the ground, left at an angle. So if there's any type of moisture at all, someone who puts their weight on that thing is going to slip right back and it are during our walk through, you know, we actually had concern about everybody walking over. So that's, you know, another area of the Glen that, you know, is in need of repair and has unfortunately been overlooked. Probably due to non usage. Uh, also, we have erosion of the soil. It's on our it's on hole two of our layout, but it's just to the right of the proposed parking area for um the disc golf course and, you know, no one had recognized that either, you know, it was a big erosion of the soil. It looks like, you know, probably a three or four foot drop, you know, it could be dangerous. Someone steps in there, you know, miss their footing, you know, young child is playing in the area. Maybe if they have an event, they park the cars there. You know, kid gets off, he could easily fall. Also, we had a shed or a bathroom. I believe it was an old bathroom. It was over in front of the manor house there. It's, the roof is completely collapsed in it, you know, nothing's been done there. It's in need of repair. Um, it might be a good idea to have another bathroom on that side of the Glen just because, you know, the other one is located way at the top. So, you know, kind of a long walk if you really got to go, you know? Let's see, uh, also we have the abandoned foundation that's right in the middle of the field there. We kind of like that, just like to be upkeep it, you know, it's all brush going in the middle. Let's chop all that down, get it looking nice again. You know, and this brings to my point, these are all the things that a disc golf course can help with where it's, you know, um implemented into. You know, all the revenue that we can get on this disc golf course can fix all of these problems at the Glen. You know, obviously there's a problem with funding because they're left sat alone and untouched, you know, and just getting worse day by day. There's also the four H area and the um old horse rank that are in need of repair also. Um, I don't think we use them that much. So I don't think it's as much as a concern as say like the bridge. That's a main concern where someone could really get hurt there and, you know, the town will be probably the one responsible for that since, you know, we upkeep the Glen. And it's unfortunate we don't have funding for that. You know, this is one of these things that disc golf can bring funding, you know, um. That's another reason why I'd like to stress the eighteen holes in the course. So with eighteen holes, you know, we're going to get the leagues we want. We're going to get the play that we want and that in turn is going to give us the revenue we want to do these things. Like before the disc golf court, if the disc golf is put in, before it gets put in, we want the bridge fixed. We're going to provide the funding to do that. Um, we would like to have the trees, um, I guess medicated, if you will. I don't know. I'm not a tree guy. You know, but we we um in discussion with the uh manor house caretaker. Um, he told me we use Bartlett Tree, I guess is the name of the company and they could, you know, come there, do whatever they need to do with the trees to hopefully save these beautiful trees. Because I mean, you can't even put your hands around them. They're so wide, they're beautiful trees. And uh, he was very open to the idea of disc golf and if we did take those, like, clear the limbs off, like the dead limbs from the trees, um, and clear the bottom, the area out below the trees, that it would be great to have a disc golf hole there. It wouldn't interfere with anything on his manor house property, the weddings, the parties, whatever they do. There's actually a chain link fence there, big drop. No way anybody's going to go walking over to the Glen from there. And not only that, it's it's would be a lot easier to remove nine holes from the disc golf course than to add them at a later time, you know, it would involve a lot of redesign. So we really want to push for the eighteen holes in this. It's going to give us the revenue that we want to make for the town and DPW and also the Glen to get these issues that I just talked about, you know, repaired. Okay, let's see. Um, actually now I think we're going to go on some of the layout and uh Dan is going to take over and go over um the eighteen hole layout first with you. So I think we could bring that slide up.
Hi, Dan Marr, ninety four Flankhorn Road. Uh, I do have to start by saying to my kids, hi, James, hi, Ellie, and go to bed and listen to your mom. Uh, I was told explicitly to put that last part in. Uh, all right. So the things that we wanted to uh address your concerns from last time, right? One of the big ones was discs going in the road. So we removed the ones that were requested and we reoriented uh reoriented uh the first hole there, which there was still a concern. If you look at one on the top left hand corner, you do see a road. So we requested actually go and have several people throw a disc to prove and show that with the way that it's going, you're not going to wind up in the road. So we've um addressed that concern. Uh, the three holes in the Manor, uh Glen Manor Fields, gone. Uh, hole twelve in the Glen Manor Woods that Rodney was just talking about there, we've moved them outside of that. Again, maybe one day it would be great to be in there, but as for now, we do not need to be in there. Uh, two holes removed in the Sacred Heart Field. That was uh explicitly from community feedback. They did not like it and we said, no problem. If it gets you, you know, more um more on our side and more for this, then we will gladly do that. And then multiple holes were reoriented to utilize existing uh stonewall breaks and to avoid walking paths. So the two things we don't want is throwing out a walking path, right? Because people walk there, you want to avoid that happening. Uh, and the other is we don't want people climbing over stone walls. There are, there are already stone breaks, um, sorry, breaks in the stone wall. And the idea being that every single hole that we are designing uh near a wall, we're trying to utilize those breaks so that people are walking through there. If you're going to get, uh, you know, to the next hole, you're not going over the stone walls. So any questions on the eighteen hole layout before I go to the nine hole layout?
I do have one question. I did walk in and this makes it a little bit easier because I was trying to fi- follow the red and white stakes and didn't know where six was going to. And then also, um why go twelve, thirteen, fourteen up the hill and not go twelve? And then thirteen be sixteen, six seventeen be fourteen in that way?
Uh, no, there is a break right there. It's a, we do not have a reason why we didn't do it that way, frankly. It was because
Just a question. I mean, it hit. And
No, it's actually a good feedback there because one of the issues is, you know, we want to be able to finish it at the top of that hill there. So that would resolve that. That wouldn't be a bad
Everything fourteen would be eighteen.
Yep, I think that's a good adjustment.
But everything else is away from the soccer fields.
Yep.
Yeah, except for the temporary field that they use on occasion by the riding ring. I think I appreciate you guys coming out and redoing this and hearing the concerns uh of the residents before. And um, I'll ask, any other questions on the eighteen hole layout by any of the counselors? If not, we'll move on to the nine hole and then we'll open it up for other questions.
All right, nine hole layout. Um, six, uh, hole six to hole seven traversal is using a um, a walking path that's already there. So that if you look at the map from here, it looks like, hey, you gotta go over a stone wall there. Nope, yeah, on the south side there, you can go right around. And hole nine was moved to use an existing um stone, uh, break in the stone wall. Frankly, it was for a better course design. Um, now we have the ample uh space, so we put that in. But it uses a break in the wall. We're not throwing over a wall there. Any questions about the nine?
Any questions in the council? On anything about the proposal? So I want to try and make this clear that this is um not a commercial venture.
That is correct.
Mr. Dubay is not going to um give up his performance power.
Precision power is not going to become precision golf.
Yeah, precision. Any monies raised through this would go through the recreation department and the finance department and all bills would be paid through the finance department.
That is our understanding of how this operates, yes.
I got a pseudo nod from our finance director, okay? Similar to the way we have
Non-for-profit.
The the dog park set up. Dog park raises money, it comes into the town. Repairs get done to the dog park.
Correct.
I am going to address one concern about the step. Paul, can we go get a check on that tomorrow, please? Thank you. Appreciate that. See that? So this proposal did cost the town a little bit of money. But that's okay. I'd rather it be safe and spend the money that Paul is spending to fix those little issues. Any questions, any other questions from the council? Um, I know there's a lot of people who would like to speak for and against this. Um, if we could keep everybody to about two minutes so we can get everybody in and then if you want to come up and say something else later as we get through it all, I will make more time available, but just so there's fair for everybody to be able to come up and talk. When you do come up, please state your name, your address, uh, what your concerns are for or against. And then we'll move on as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Stand by in case there's any questions specifically about the proposal. Mister Fierl.
Back again.
First up.
David Fierl, forty five Hamilton Drive, Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, two minutes. Um, just want to say again, this is a process that we and Dan came to our committee in December. Many revisions to this layout, a lot of public comment. A lot of concerns were brought up. As you can see, just from the two times that they presented in front of you, we've changed this layout many times. I walked with Dan and uh Roderick the day before when you guys asked us to stake the grounds. And we listened to the concerns. As you saw, they moved some of the holes further away. They're, the only two houses that can actually see any holes is holes one and two. It's those two ho- houses right on that road. So they've made a lot of concessions to what they have heard. Um, we obviously approved this um in May at six to zero and we stand by it. Uh, we think it's great for the town. It's a great asset for the town. Um, and um, we're here to support. Thank you. I might be back.
Well, I thought a lot of people were going to want to talk about it, but maybe not. Mrs. Davidson. If you could just pull that down so you can speak right into it. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Rosemary Davidson. I live at one seventy five Frank Coelho Drive. But way before I lived there, nineteen seventy one, I would say, when I was like thirty, not even. It came, the idea came up to buy the Glen property. My husband and I decided that we should join forces and we did all kinds of things to educate people about the Glen. We had coffees, we had get togethers so that it could be put on the ballot and voted on. The town voted to buy the Glen in nineteen seventy three. And for the townspeople of Portsmouth. And for many years until I retired, anything at Glen Park was to be sponsored by a Portsmouth resident. It was not a state park. It was not open to anybody. There was a control on it. Um, you know, if you go down there, there's caps around the ball field, dark green. The colors in the in the Glen are green and white. Why is that? Not by accident. So that people have a clear vista of the green, serene landscape of Glen Park. I feel that I don't have anything against disc golf. I'm too old to really care about that. But I do have a problem of all those structures around the park. It's going to aesthetically ruin the park. There, it's not only those structures, there's a T before them. So if you have eighteen holes, you've got thirty six things within that park. It's not that big. Glen Park is not that big. Recreation was designated for Glen Farm. And all of those fields in Glen Farm, it got lost because new people came into the picture and they have, had no regard for the history, the vision, or anything that was before. So with that being said, had I been on the Parks and Rec Committee, I went in the spring, but it was almost kind of a done deal. I would have directed them to Glen Farm to find some place within there, even if it was all around the periphery. They could have a hundred baskets if they went all around the periphery of Glen Farm. But this is just invasive. It's not what Glen Farm was supposed to be. And there's a saying, if an old man plants a tree, the shade of which you will never see. Why does he plant it? For generations to come. The people in nineteen seventy three, most of them are gone. Gil Barker, that road's named after him. Frank Coelho, that road's named after him. Mary Kessler, all kinds, all people who gave hours and hours of their time. Grace Kennan, and the last time you said she cleaned the bathrooms. She did a lot more than clean bathrooms at Glen Park. Give credit where credit's due. We didn't have, we had repairs. We were on a schedule. Things were dealt with on a three thousand dollar budget most of the time. Okay? When I left, I think it was five. Now it's much more. But I have been a watchdog and yes, I have had to call a few times and say, this needs to be done. The bathrooms need to be opened by this time. The bathrooms need to be closed before the frost hits. Things like that. I have had to do. I mean, you can sell this park and I don't care. Money's not the issue here. The park is the issue. The green spacious park for everybody to enjoy. Not one entity across country is not here, but they'll be severely impacted by this. And what's better than seeing all those buses pull up and all those kids get off and have a cross-country meet? Or have the four H fair? Which was the original use of Glen Park? So, I mean, it's on you to think of the park for generations to come. I grew up in Springfield, Massachusetts with Forest Park. It was, the land was donated by the Barneys. To this day, it's a big park. But this day, recreation things are only allowed in a small periphery. Sports are allowed in another periphery. And there isn't one thing allowed in the woods or on the pass in that park. If you've ever been to Forest Park in Springfield, you know how beautiful it is. So this is a small little park. Keep it for Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clinton.
Harding.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Connie Harding, eight eighty four Union Street, Portsmouth. And I've been asked to come in today um by my, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. I'm a member of the commission and he's away on travel. I want to start by saying the Conservation Commission serves to protect and develop natural resources and preserve natural aesthetic areas within the town. Before I go on to the Conservation Commission, as a citizen and resident, I would be foolish to even go against any kind of recreation in a wonderful organization that's trying to get this forward. any kind of recreation in a wonderful organization that's trying to get this forward. But I think we can do better for this organization, and I'll explain why. We can do better for the town. The beautiful thing about town history, it also doesn't have to be political, biased, left, right, age, old. We can all come together on this issue and build something big and great. We need to respect and appreciate what generations before us have done. In 1972, when Portsmouth had the opportunity to purchase the Manor House property and Elmhurst Academy, the Conservation Commission approved it, according to an article from 1972. One and a half years later, they paused. They did this right. That's beautiful purchase. They didn't have to rush into it even a year. It was a year and a half. On October 8th, a progress report was issued on the development of Glen Park at a financial town meeting. The town did something, they did their due diligence. They didn't want to get involved in something that wasn't gonna just be neutral instead of costing money. It was clear that the park was to be used by only Portsmouth residents, as Mrs. Davidson said, or groups that are sponsored by Portsmouth residents. For instance, when the Boy Scouts, I've raised a few Boy Scouts, have camped out down there. One of them is a Portsmouth resident. They're leaders of Portsmouth residents. It's just not open to anybody. For different reasons, obviously, liabilities, and we'd need to know who's using our gym. 4-H Field has also always been sponsored by a Portsmouth resident, and different soccer fields and everything else. The Glen and its historical landscapes act as a time capsule for Portsmouth history. The past 50 years, it's been the gem of our community. The one thing I understand that's working really well is the Glen Manor House right now. That vista as you turn the corner, just, I know they're baskets and they're not really obtrusive or anything, but it's just opening it up to more and more and more, instead of having these beautiful vistas. Like Mrs. Davidson said, perhaps the upper Glen, there's many other open space areas in Portsmouth. I know the Fields off of Sandy Point. There's so many areas to do this. When I was at the last meeting, August 12th, I was under the impression the Conservation Commission was going to get together with this committee. I'm not sure if I missed an email. I'm not sure what happened. But again, I just think to slow it down a little bit, perhaps try out the nine holes. But I just think we're rushing into this too fast. So that's the opinion of the Conservation Committee is just as a preservationist, historical-type committee, just do a little more due diligence. We've already opened the barn a few times up near the soccer fields. Let the horses out already. Let's just maybe bring them back in and slow it down. And again, let's work with this group as a community, form another committee, and see where else this is possible. We have some beautiful spaces in Portsmouth that this can be possible at. So thank you.
Harding.
Hi, my name is Reed Valant. I live on 147 Roger Street in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. And I just wanted to come to this meeting to support a disc golf course in this area. As someone who doesn't live directly in your town, but just, we do not have a lot of disc golf courses in this area. I do believe it would turn into an attraction for your town. Bringing in people who have to eat at restaurants and, you know, fund events that would be put on at that disc golf course. I also want to point out that a lot of these courses are mixed-use. They're pretty commonly made in parks. So this idea of it being this invasive thing is kind of, I think, a little bit misunderstood in terms of the scale of it. Certainly, it's less invasive than a ballpark or some other recreational use. So I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's any more of an eyesore than a baseball diamond or something to that effect. And, you know, if we're not using parks for recreational purposes, then really, what are they for? You know, it's not only for one group of people like hikers or bird watchers or whatever it is. So at the end of the day, you know, I don't speak on behalf of your town, but I can tell you that there are a lot of people watching this. There's a petition out there that has over 400 signatures, which I'm sure you've seen. And yeah, the community would be really excited to have the chance to play disc golf out here. And as other people have stated, it is a very temporary structure. This could be removed if you wanted to try it on a trial basis. You know, I've never seen someone remove it, but there are plenty of examples of other parks in this general area, such as Slater Park in Pawtucket, there's Borderland in Northeastern, and then out on Cape Cod, there's Burgess Park as well. If there's questions as to what it looks like, you can just reference any of those other existing structures and see what kind of issues they have there, if any. But from my experience, the community has always been extremely respectful. They take care of the properties that they're allowed on, and, you know, they're very helpful for people looking to get into a sport that doesn't have a lot of barriers to entry. So I just wanted to come here and say that tonight.
Thank you, sir. Read that.
Deborah Faber, 74.
Bring the mic. There we go.
I usually don't need a mic. Deborah Faber, 74 Highland Ave. Thank you for the opportunity. And I'd like to make two brief points before the committee. The first point is, before I was appointed to the committee, I shared my background and perspective in the open space and land use. One of the reasons for joining this committee was for balance between the two. I see disc golf as an invasion with the regular leagues and tournaments, collectively with the activities already placed at the Glen Park. The change then becomes land use and not open space, in my judgment. The Open Space Committee worked hard to preserve open space in the community, along with ALT, Connie Hardy with Preserve Portsmouth, and all the, so that you, and all other properties so that you could, so we could have the unique visual that we have in Portsmouth's eye. So all that you see that makes Portsmouth unique. We do not want to lose the characteristic beauty of what people desire in open space. So hold that thought. The second point I would like to make is, with the recent August meetings, I realized that this project has changed, expanded than what was approved by the committee and was not properly vetted. These are just some of the changes that have been introduced but not vetted with the committee. Now it has turned into a business run by the town under Parks and Rec. This was not discussed. Number two, this will increase outsiders into our preserved open space like a golf course on weekends with competitive leagues and tournaments to an 18-hole golf course with golf carts. That was not discussed.
There will be no golf carts on the Glen property. It's a, it's a walking sport. There will be no golf carts on a Glen property.
They talked about pulling, they're talking about pulling golf carts.
It's not a driving.
Three, required to register online and pay a fee of $5 or $10. There was really no discussion, and there's no clarity on that. No cost to the town. A town employee, a bookkeeper of some sort, would be required to record all the transactions, monitor expenses, maintenance, scheduling, and oversight on a continued basis. This is the foot of the door, just steps to expansion. The illusion is, change takes time. The truth is, change happens the moment you decide. Please preserve our open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faber.
I'm going to tie myself.
That's okay. I don't think I've been following the two minutes very well.
Captain Jim Kettsmaller, United States Navy, retired, 140 Adams Drive. Two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, I didn't know what disc golf was. I thought it was a bunch of hippies throwing frisbees. I grew up in the 60s, so I know what a hippie looks like. I put the work in since that time to educate myself on the topic. I had a head start on that. I am the newest member of your Parks and Recreation Committee. Thank you to this august body for making that happen. At our last meeting, these gentlemen were very generous with their time. I would say 60 minutes, and they truly walked the dog with us in terms of what the game was, how it was organized. They had display placards. They also had handouts of the maps and the layout. I was very intrigued by the concept. Now, I was not able, I was not available Friday morning to do a walkabout with this group, because I do have a job, even though I'm retired Navy captain. But that evening, I, on my own time, I walked the course, because I had the maps provided by these gentlemen. Also, over the weekend, I spent some time on YouTube, watching videos on disc golf. Who knew? There are actually multiple discs. It's not just like one frisbee. Who knew? I don't know. I see this as nothing but opportunity. I think it's a great way to highlight our beautiful green spaces. And I am not afraid by having people other than Portsmouth come into our town and walking those beautiful fields and afterwards getting a drink or lunch at whatever local restaurant. I'd be interested to know if there are any local business people here, what their thoughts on it, but I would think this is a great opportunity. So with 10 seconds remaining, I see the microphone. I am all in support of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Leslie Yates, 433 Windstone Drive. I grew up on Glen Road. That is my backyard. I played down in Glen Park, rode my bike around that area. My heart is there. My family still lives on that street. My family has been on that street for generations, back to 1799. I feel like I can speak on this subject. The open space would not disappear with a new sport parked in the park. The baskets are unobtrusive. You can see right through them. They can be removed. If you don't like them, we can take them out. I'm not associated with this group. However, I've seen disc golf in other locations before. It's a great way to bring families together. It's a great way for people who are not athletic to actually get outside and breathe fresh air and be in the sun. It's a great way to bring people together. It can bring people from out of state into the town of Portsmouth to spend money at our restaurants and bars and Graphic and Ragged Island and the Portsmouth Shop, Clements, all the places that we love to frequent. We can share that with people. I do not understand the comments about we don't want to bring outsiders into this town. I'm proud of this town. I left this town for almost 20 years, came back here with so much pride and actually brought one of my best friends here and my husband from out of state as well. They love it here. We want people to see how beautiful this space is. We want to see and use our open space. That is what it is for, to see and enjoy our open space. And I really don't understand anybody who disagrees with this. Open to your perspective, however, I haven't heard anything yet that would convince me that this is a bad idea. Don't we want families and friends to gather together doing something that's good for everybody? It makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. I'm just going to hold you for one quick second, just if I could ask, that when everybody does do a presentation, speak to the council. We don't want to have any back and forth with folks in the audience. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Understood. My name is Spencer Linds. I am the NIFA Grants Coordinator, the New England Flying Disc Association Grants Coordinator. I'm from Attleboro, Massachusetts. I'm not going to speak like I'm a resident of this place. I am very interested in coming to play disc golf in this place potentially someday. Really, all I want to do is offer a case study for what I've done in Attleboro, Massachusetts. Highland Park is an old reclaimed ball golf course in Attleboro, Massachusetts. It's essentially been handed over to the city or bought by the city and has since naturalized and grown in. There's a lot of invasive species, glossy buckthorn, Japanese knotweed, mugwort, things of this nature that have sort of grown in in that park. What I've done is basically put a proposal up to the city to attempt to get a disc golf course installed there, and that has since been approved. Since that's happened, I've gone out there with a group of volunteers, a group of disc golfers that I've engaged with in the local community, and we've gone out and done a bunch of trash cleanups and stuff like that in order to basically just beautify and make nice the natural areas that, you know, we so much appreciate in our city over there. Additionally, what we've done is gone out and cleared a lot of these invasive species that exist in a lot of those fairways that have grown in over there. And we removed about three acres worth of invasive species over there. And this was all disc golfers that we called upon in order to do so. These were piles and piles of volunteers that we basically just posted on Facebook and asked for them to come out and help us. In addition to all that, we have, I've sort of done a putting league over there and gotten a bunch of individuals from the local community to just come in and enjoy disc golf and putting and things of that nature without having a course yet. So really, all I want to highlight here is the positive impacts that this town could stand to benefit from that don't just include having a recreational amenity to play. You're going to be calling upon a local community that's really engaged in the disc golf community, and we're all very excited to come here, spend time in Portsmouth, have a third place, meet new people, meet friends, meet locals, come spend money here at the local businesses, and just enjoy the great town that Portsmouth is. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDonald. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Stephen McDonald. I live at 124 Old Mill Lane. And my remarks will be real brief for this one, because quite frankly, I didn't even think I was going to talk about this subject. But when I heard it, I said, "I've got to support this group." And the reason why I'm saying this is because at one time I had four kids that lived here. All four of them have moved, and they all moved because they said, "Dad, this place is boring. There's nothing to do." Wouldn't you know, about five years ago, we had a family wedding in a place called Manchester, Connecticut, Wyndham Park. And at Wyndham Park, it was a pretty nice place, and they had one of these golf courses set up. Now, I didn't know at the time that was going to be part of the wedding, but we played this frisbee golf or some sort of thing, and you know what? It was a lot of fun. My daughter, that has moved down to South Carolina, I went ahead and I visited her recently. Where did she take me? To one of these parks. Now, I'm looking at these things, and I'm saying to myself, "They're all young kids." And I'm looking at the people who were putting this together. That generation likes this stuff. It may not be for me, but it's for that generation. If we want kids to stay here, we have to have things that's going to be for them. So I would recommend supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donald.
Commandant Major Retired, Matt Walker, 887 Anthony Road. I would just want to rise in support of this endeavor and throw some weight behind these young men who are trying to bring this to the town. I think it's a great idea. You'll remember my comments from last time, I'm sure. Will not elaborate any further. Try to stay under two minutes. But I will say, it is for my generation, and it's for everybody who wants to try it, wants to get outside and play. You need to still do that in your life, and this is a great opportunity for Portsmouth if you all take advantage of it. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Eric N. Shin, 127 Frank Coelho Drive, Commander, United States Navy, retired. While I applaud the entrepreneurial spirit of these gentlemen, I think I have serious reservations about the location of this proposed venue. I have been in risk management for over 35 years. And actually, we moved to 127 Frank Coelho in 1999, and I successfully petitioned the town to install a stop sign at the corner of Glen Road and Frank Coelho Drive because of excessive speeding going down the road. While it's been mostly successful, we still have violators like the local FedEx driver and the, some of the landscaping contractors down there. But it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and there are still a lot of violators. And going either, going higher up Glen Road, we have And going either, going up higher up Glen Road, we have several families with young, young children, including, you know, small toddlers. So I have grave concerns about, uh, you know, traffic impact in that coming down. We really don't know what we're looking at as far as an increase, but I'd heard it could be as much as, what, five, six hundred a month? Tea times being played over at the facility. So bottom line, I think there needs to be more due diligence that needs to be done. I think seventy would be a wise choice. We've got the Beast of the East that goes on up there. Why not, why not put the disc golf up there? The park is, as Connie Harding said, it's a, it's a great treasure. It's a bucolic setting. I think that's something that needs to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy, can you bring up Mr. Penning, please? Or Ms. Penning, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Everyone hear me this time?
Yes, sir.
Ah, great. So I don't have to rush through the town hall. Thomas Penning, I live at two ninety-seven Glen Road. I'm the house in the park. I had the pleasure to come before you a couple of weeks ago, opposing the first proposal that came in front of the town council for the disc golf. Since then, I do want to highlight and applaud the democratic process. And then particularly, that has really been working with the neighbors around here. And here, everyone's concerned, concerns around, as it was just mentioned, cars flying down the street, which I would make a request to maybe update the twenty-five map per hour signage at the beginning of Glen Road, which is completely faded. And I think we should also install a children at play signage at the beginning of the park. But I do appreciate Dan working with the neighbors and everyone around the town in ensuring that concerns were heard over this. Overall, I'm happy to hear that within this democratic process, there's a lot of support for disc golf. Who knew so many people wanted disc golf and wanted to play disc golf overall? So thank you again, Dan. I appreciate you working with the neighbors, listening to our concerns. And at the end of the day, I hope that the council, the town council will consider everyone's overall concern and the neighbors that I've brought in front of this, of this meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penning. Mr. Preo.
I'm reclaiming some of my time from earlier. Forty-five Hamilton Drive. I'm listening to all the comments and I just, I keep hearing about it's taking up space. Does anyone know the footprint of how big Glen Park is and how big or how little the footprint of eighteen pins and four by four wood posts would take up? It probably would take up half of a dugout that is in Glen Park that bears Rosemary's last name. It's a very small footprint, number one. I've also heard that we need to slow this process down. This has been a process that our committee has met with Dan and Roderick every month since December, and we've talked. And I'm also a little disheartened to hear Deborah come up and now she's against it, which she made the motion to approve disc golf and was seconded by Cynthia, who's no longer on our committee. All of this was vetted, talked about. We talked about it's not an enterprise, it's not run by anybody, it's run by the town, it's going through Parks and Recreation, nobody's benefiting off of this financially. These are all things that have been talked about numerous, numerous times. And it's a lot of misinformation out on social media. The other day, somebody was saying about golf carts. How are we going to drive golf carts through Glen Park? It's not golf, it's disc golf, it's walking. I just, I'm, yeah, I'm, just want to reiterate, it's a very small footprint. There's a lot of things in Glen Park that take up much bigger footprint. There's a baseball field that takes up way more of a footprint, that has banners all over the baseball field. There's a cow stall that is falling down, that is dilapidated, that four H uses one weekend, one, actually, this year, they, one day of the year. Cow stalls that are falling down, pig pens that are falling down. We're talking about eighteen posts and some four by four posts going in the ground. I think if anybody would get in their car and go to any one of the disc golf courses that are off the island, they would see, this is not taking up any footprint. It is not destroying the beauty of Glen. There's other structures on the Glen that are destroying the beauty of Glen. This would enhance the Glen. This will allow our residents, and there's nothing wrong with residents outside of the town coming here to enjoy this. I leave the island every day. There's not bad people off the island. They're good people. I want people to come here from this town and outside the town to enjoy this. And come, go and eat at Fieldstones and West Main Pizza and whatnot. Enjoy the town of Portsmouth. It's a great place and it should be a great place for our residents, and this will help with that. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Alex Roberts. I live on two seventy-nine Sandy Point Avenue. I walk through the park regularly. I moved here probably five years ago and my wife is the one who grew up in the area. And one of the things that I actually looked for when I moved was, hey, where can I go play frisbee golf? Because I have played on the West Coast and I've played on the East Coast and I've played in Alaska, probably played on, I don't know, ten or fifteen different courses around country. And I think this park would be great to have frisbee golf in. Honestly, I walk in it every week, maybe every other week, and I would be very excited to bring my daughter, when she grows up, and play frisbee golf and enjoy the park. That's the point of the park. So why not have yet another reason to do so? I think it would be wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Roderick. Anybody else? Don't be shy or be shy and maybe we can go home earlier. This is David.
I believe you have received many emails.
Yes, we have, both for and against.
Right. Okay. And take those into consideration. I'm not against disc golf. I'm against disc golf in Glen Park.
Understood.
Because it is small and it is a big footprint.
It's a big footprint in an area, but the structures take off a very small footprint where people can walk either way. And if, and I'm going to address some of the concerns that we've gotten in some of those emails, that people who are walking their dog wouldn't be able to walk their dog. Yes, you can.
Cross country.
Cross country can still do cross country. Softball can still play softball.
Softball will do that.
Soccer can still play soccer. There's more of a danger, I think, of you getting hit by a foul ball, walking by the softball.
I don't like the idea of strangers either walking through those woods. My kids used to play in the Glen all the time.
I know, but we're, we're also.
I couldn't let my nine grandchildren go over there by themselves.
Also assuming that people currently don't come in from out of town and walk through there, which there probably are plenty.
They don't. No, it's a lot. I live there, Keith. I see who goes in and out of there a lot. I had three daughters, nine grandchildren. Not once did I ever hear that they had nothing to do. They don't have enough hours in the day to do what they have to do. Plus, I had four college athletes. That's all I have belonging that there's nothing to do.
Matt Yates, four three three Windstone Drive. I'm the husband that was brought in from out of state.
And a friend.
Yes, and a friend. We belong, my wife and I belong to the Portsmouth unofficial walking group on Facebook. Our group walks through the Glen several times a year. There, there, there's no place, I, I've seen comments online about people hiking through the park that would be at risk of being hit by discs. These are frisbees thrown by people who are generally conditioned to throw them. It's not a bunch of kids whipping frisbees around like you're at a beach. They have control of these things. They're not flying saw blades that are going to take someone's head off. This is not a concern for safety because these people are just like someone who plays baseball. Baseball is a dangerous thing in someone's hand who has malicious intent. That's not the case with people who play disc golf. I have several friends in Southern California who do play it. I've seen them do it. They have a great time. I'd love to try it myself once I have time to do it. The concern about people coming in from out of town, several people in our walking group don't live in Portsmouth. We enjoy walking all around Portsmouth, through the Glen, wherever it may be. We should not be opposed to quote unquote outsiders in our town. That's, it's not a, it's not a bad thing to have people who don't live here in our town. I just want to make sure that we're all looking at this objectively and not from a negative standpoint that there's a stigma associated with people who don't live here doing malicious things because they want to throw a frisbee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Mr. DiPaola.
Mike DiPaola, ten seventy-four East Main Road. I'm not against this golf. It doesn't affect me. I played at Augusta National. I'm not a golfer. So when he says that the players know where the ball, where the disc is going, I beg to differ. I've played in Augusta National and they have no clue where they're going. So I'm sure just like golf, the disc golfers, the amateurs, the inexperienced, they're going to go everywhere. But I'm not against it. I support it, go for it. Have a good day.
Good evening. My name's Henry Cotta, twenty-three West Passage Drive, born and raised Portsmouth on a farm, turned submarine mechanic, not sure I like to pin out. I started the sport about three years ago. Actually, met Dan for the first time at a nearby park off island and have fell in love with the sport. I travel a lot for work and I bring my discs with me. I just want to say a few things. The, the disc golf aspect of the, the name, I feel like there's a lot of misinterpretation with the, the two sports, ball golf, regular golf and disc golf. They are very, very different. The only two similarities I can think of are the rules. You go out of bounds, you pull out, you take a stroke, you have to throw again, and the fact that you have a target, a target that you were trying to get towards. As someone who has picked up the sport pretty quick, I'm no pro, but I play a decent game, not to sound modest. I have been playing regular golf for twenty years of my life and I'm happy when I break a hundred. Like, it is a very different sport. As for coming into the sport, form is very key. And someone who doesn't know how to play will come in and they will try. And typically, they have, if they're right-handed, they'll go kind of up like this and it doesn't go very far. Form is very, very detrimental for distance. And once you start developing that form, you start developing accuracy and you start getting an understanding for it. So the, the notion of people getting hurt or hit with discs, in my experience, have, will decrease significantly based off of the time somebody spends on the sport to play and enhances their skill. So, side note, the, the community comparatively to regular golf, which golf is great, but undeniably the best people out there. They are extremely friendly. Like I said, I travel for work and I go to all these disc golf courses and I have met so many new people, so many wonderful, genuine individuals, people who have given me their phone numbers and offered me to, next time I'm out there, stay at their facilities. Like, the, the people out there are undeniably great. You've heard about the, the community getting together to clean up. I've seen it numerous times at multiple courses across the country where there's just groups that will go in, they will clean up, they'll do what they need to do because the passion for this sport is absolutely there. On top of all the other supporting things everybody said about, you know, bringing people into the town to stop for, for lunch and, and bring revenue in for the town, it's just support. Sorry.
Name was Spad. Anybody else? Questions, comments from the council? Very quiet council this evening.
Motion for, oh, go ahead. I thought there was. So I want to thank Dan and, I already forgot.
Roderick.
Rod, for, for taking the time on Friday, you know, to set everything up and, and walking with us and addressing our concerns and everything we had. I am not against disc golf. I don't even play, never knew about it before. I just think that there are some concerns, as you spoke and we walked and we saw, you know, the safety concerns and things like that, that need to be addressed and other due diligence that we need to, you know, take a look at before just saying yes, move forward. I prefer, if we didn't have it at Glen Park, but doing a nine hole versus an eighteen hole, you know, there's options. The liability is a big thing. I guess everything would fall on the town, correct? If like outer staters or any accidents or any things like that would happen?
Any public facility or playground?
Right, okay.
But if they established a league similar to PYSA or of course with Little League, the league would have to carry insurance specific to be allowed to play.
Correct. They would have to carry a tulip if it's an organized event, much like Beast of the East or father-son soccer.
Okay. And the other thing that was brought up was the fields. The fields right now, the three fields are being maintained by Escobar, not by DPW, as we heard on Friday. Is that still, is that correct, all three of those?
That is somewhat correct. DPW means, maintains the border around all the fields. Right now, we let the grass grow tall for Escobar to get some hay out of it. That's not an ongoing thing, it's not a guaranteed thing.
Right. It's a, like a verbal.
Yeah, I wouldn't call it maintenance. We're solely doing it so that they can get a benefit out of what's growing there because it's not currently being used.
Right. So then if this change, if say disc golf goes there, then that would have to stop or change?
They could still get the hay out of Sacred Heart Field since we're not in there. They could let that grow and they could get, yeah. I just wanted to ask about the safety concerns because I thought we had taken care, what were your safety concerns?
Off the bridge.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with disc golf, though.
Well, you have to walk over the bridge and get.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was just trying to bring to the attention that these things are already safety hazards existing and that we would want them fixed.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
They would need to be fixed before anything.
Okay, I was just a little confused. I was like, okay, I thought we addressed those.
The marsh area that you spoke about.
Yeah, the erosion of the soil, I thought we could have that filled, you know, at least made it into a soft slope, you know, like a hill, I guess. Maybe I just, a dump truck full of dirt or something, you know, that.
Sure.
Or seeded, you know, but at least, like I said, we want to take care of the Glen. And I think we've had a few people stand up here that, you know, how much love disc golfers have for the places that our courses are in because we know how it is. They don't like, if things start happening that people don't like, they're going to say, hey, we don't want this anymore. We don't want that as disc golfers. We come to places, we clean up trash, we let our revenue through our leagues and, you know, tournaments or whatever they be, however, donations, you know, all to just, to build the parks better. So, you know, it's a good look on a disc golf course. We're not, you know.
I understand all that. It's just getting there. So these things need to be done before that is possible?
Yeah.
So just to get, you know, how much is that going to cost to fix all these things before we get there?
So I believe the big one was the step and we had just heard that it's already in the process of getting fixed. As far as the erosion, it's nothing more than a dump truck full of soil to have that fixed. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. The erosion there is from the stream. Every couple of years, the stream moves it over and washes it out. We go there every few years and we pull it all back. So that's going to start also this week.
So a fencing or anything would be put up or?
It will not be needed.
It won't be needed?
No.
That's slow.
Correct.
Okay. And, I was like, I'm sorry. And then I was just, you know, last time we had the council meeting, we did talk about other areas and I know you said.
That I'd like to address next. So the reason why the Glen is our choice is because I've explored the other areas that I believe Mr. Gleason. I've explored the other areas that I believe, uh, Mr. Gleason came to one of the meetings and told me to. The one down at Melville would be great, but it's, uh, I guess some kind of dump for the Navy. So you can't do any digging there. Not only that, places like that and also lower seventy around like the areas that we would have to be because we can't be in the soccer fields. We can't be, you know, those fields are already utilized. Nor do we want to be in there, you know, um, the area that we were proposed to look at is all swampland. It's the reason why it hasn't been developed yet. And now to put one of these disc golf courses in the woods, it's a lot more work. I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to have trees removed, things taken down. It, it, it's not really feasible like that. What is feasible is the Glen. It's an open space given to the town. You know, the town owns this. This is a perfect spot for it. There's really not a good reason on why it should not be there. Thank you.
I understand that. I'm just trying to get to the point where, you know, it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars or five thousand dollars from the town to get order to get it going. That's all. I'm just trying to find out.
It's not gonna cost any money to the town at all.
Well, we have to fix the things before.
But those are things not to, I mean, that should be fixed anyways. Isn't that a liability? A step on a, on a, that's, that, so that should be, that should be fixed anyways. The reason, the reason, well, the.
I can't hear you.
So those things we would have never known about if we didn't do that walkthrough that we did the other day.
You're absolutely correct.
So bringing disc golf, those are things that should have already been fixed.
You're right.
The, the only two safety hazards there were the bridge and erosion of the soil. The rest were hazards I wanted to fix on our own recognizance, like the beautiful trees that are there that are dying and no one's doing anything about it. You know, the overgrowth underneath those trees that nobody's doing anything about. The dilapidated bathrooms with the, you know, roof that's fallen in that nobody's doing anything about. You know, the rest of the structures there that nobody is doing it about.
And that's all been there for many, many years.
Yeah.
And we, and I just saw it myself. I understand that. I just don't want to have kids or people, you know, start this and that it doesn't get done, you know, so I'm.
I don't believe in a disc golf course that's ever happened. You know, the money we have funded, these things are very simple to build. They're not expensive to build and the upkeep is minimal. The upkeep is already there with the DPW. Yes, I understand someone gets hay out of that field. But there's no reason they can't get it from Sacred Heart. Is there any reason why they can't get it from the fields on Sandy Point? Can we offer that to? And I'm just trying to counteract all the, you know, the negativity around it and I really don't see.
It's not negativity. I'm just trying to figure it out. You know, I don't want to say, go ahead and do this. And then the bridge doesn't, or the step doesn't get fixed or the erosion spot doesn't get fixed. And then we have bigger issues and liability issues.
Sure, I can.
I'm trying to find out.
And I can assure you both of those issues will be fixed.
By the town.
Or I, if the town does not want to do it, I will, I will provide the money to do that.
No, I'm just, you know, the town needs to do it. The town needs to do it. And, yes.
All right, folks, 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 folks. We don't need to be barking from the audience. We've already heard from DPW that it's gonna be fixed. I trust Paul, it's gonna be fixed.
I think what your town really wants is a disc golf course.
I'm not saying I don't. I'm just saying I want these, things need to be done before that happens. That's all.
Are you all set, Ms. Spat?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. Just want to make sure.
Just comment.
Ms. Blank.
Request Paul, would it be possible to, um, as stated before of updating that twenty-five mile per hour sign? Regardless of this, I'd, I'd like to get that updated for safety.
The, the children playing ahead sign, I think it was a request.
Yes.
It was two-parter.
A two-parter. Well, certainly, certainly the current sign to get updated. Is, is that possible? Thank you. And would it be possible to add the children at play sign? Is, is that a possibility or is there any requirements for that?
The MUTCD is the Federal Guidelines for Signage. They came out with a whole paragraph that I can send to you that states that adding children at play signs encourages children to play in streets and they don't recommend it.
I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Hey. That's, that's a sad but true, but thank you, Paul. See all the fun things you learn coming to a town council meeting? We don't want to encourage children playing in the streets. All right. Paul, one other request. Uh, when the, uh, bailing of the hay was done, one of them got away and rolled bound to the bottom of the hill there. It, it, it's just the, you know, you, you could see what happened. They finished rolling it and it was sitting on the hill and down it went into the trees. Thankfully, nobody was walking their dog when it was doing that. All right. You can do whatever you would like, Ms. Blank.
I'm, I'm, I still have mine.
Okay.
My comment.
Ms. McDowell, sure.
So I want to also thank the committee for, um, allowing us to do the walkthrough. And I, I want to be perfectly clear before I start that I am not against disc golf, okay? I am not against it. However, the walkthrough did provide an opportunity for me to see, get a better glimpse of what is actually involved. Unfortunately, I think if we had had the disc that I asked for right at the beginning, it might have made it even, um, more understandable for me. But at the end of the walk along, I, I was told that we didn't have a disc, but at the end of the walk along, we did get the disc and we tried a couple, uh, at least one hole. And that hole was the first hole. And that hole is the hole near the street, the Glen, Glen Farm Road. I still have really big concerns about young kids starting to play this or playing this and the disc going into the, the road and causing a problem. I also think from that first hole throwing that disc, not that I did it, but a couple others, that that this sport right now is an adult sport. For, for for those holes, navigating those holes. It is going to take someone experienced to do that properly. And so when someone mentioned somebody mentioned a golf ball going where you don't want it to go, a disc going where you don't want it to go, there is potential for that. The other thing is that when we did do the walkthrough, I, I, I just can't believe that the committee was not aware that those three fields were, um, were mowed by Escobar under a, a kind of an agreement. Given that fact, and I know the DPW does do the, uh, the perimeter, I, I would, I'm really concerned of what this is going to impact, how this is going to impact us financially. And I say this for the following reasons. Who is going to maintain the fields once Escobar doesn't mow them? I'm assuming DPW. People requesting the gift, uh, the disc golf proposal weren't aware of, you know, what was happening with that. We presently are not able to mow our properties without the help of a landscaping company at the tune of thirty thousand dollars and that was in the July voucher. We have not been able to fill three DPW positions in some time now. So we are three positions short. How can we add more work for them at this point? And I know the, the people who have worked really hard at putting this together say that they are going to come through for us. We don't have any assurances of that. You can say that you're going to come through. You can say that you're gonna get donations to take care of all this maintenance and, but I don't, I don't feel that that we have that in writing or we have that as a definite thing. Our park and recreation director has mentioned to me twice in meetings that her plate is full. How is she going to schedule usage of the park? Be responsible for the issues of cleanup? Collect and record fees for events, et cetera. She has also been trying to fill an assistant director position since the beginning of summer. And I believe she has not filled that position yet. We cannot add any more positions to park and recreation. Mr. Dubey mentioned several times and, and his enthusiasm is wonderful. But he mentioned several times about, uh, revenue. We're gonna get so much revenue from this. How will the revenue that will be brought in by this endeavor will be able, how will it be able to maintain the area? Clean up the area, put up the fences, et cetera. Is this going to be a family sport or is this going to be for tournaments in order to get revenue? I guess I need to see a, a better understanding of re- revenue potential and expense. And until I see that, I cannot go forward. The other thing is there, there are too many questions for me, still not answers and concerns not addressed for locating the sport at the Glen. I am an open space advocate and this does not line up with preserving the Glen's open space. But I will work with anybody to try to locate another place, I guess in Portsmouth, maybe Dartmouth, I don't know, um, to look for a disc golf venue.
I, I, I.
Mr. Pyero, sorry.
Thank, thank you. No, Mr.'s fine. And I, I, I'm probably have too much PTSD of like us kicking the can even further. And we want to have this port, it's sport in Portsmouth. I'm, I don't think that we're the council of the city of Dartmouth. And so I think the Glen is the right space. There was a gentleman in the back. I don't know if he's still here. And probably, uh, probably in the back, probably in the, I just don't see him. And younger gentleman, sorry, not you, sir.
Sorry, Matt.
Matt, much love, but no. And kind of echoed a lot of the sentiments that people my age have about coming to this town. And we, we, we're talking about open space and everything, but we're okay with the soccer fields. We're okay with baseball. We're okay with this. We're okay with that. I'm more concerned about us using that first field for parking. And I think that the cars on the, in the park are a bigger issue than us having disc golf. So the fact that we are just continuously, and I feel that we, this has become the echo of this council for the last couple of months, we just continuously just kick an idea down the road, down the road. And I, I, there, there have been some valid questions and I won't disregard that. But when is this council gonna start taking action on anything? This is a moment that we have. This is a moment that we have, and then this is gonna be an echo that I'm gonna have later on with my resolution for us to have secondary and tertiary opportunities to bring people into town, to start possibly considering Portsmouth as a home, to be able to go. Trust me. I coached soccer for five years. There has almost never been a time that I don't stop at Anadis for a coffee and, and a, and a keto bagel, which I absolutely love from there. And, and then either go to the park or stop on my way out. Those types of opportunities we need to create where we constantly think about, oh, the tax base, the tax base, the tax base. The only way that we're gonna diversify this entire tax base is by bringing in people from outside of this town in order to use our commercial businesses. It, it, it's not rocket science. And to be able to just kick this down just because we have some questions. Every good idea, every good project manager knows, hey, we're gonna have a million questions. We will figure this out. And it is kind of, I, I don't want to say building the plane midair because I hate that analogy. But things arise and we address those questions as we come along in, in developing and executing on a project. So just continuously go down this road and do nothing. And not provide a new opportunity for this town, I, I, I think is just a mistake and I will be supporting whichever option we go with wholeheartedly.
Mr. Kelly, are you stretching your legs or you want to come in and say something? Okay.
Andrew Kelly, two hundred Redwood Road. I came here because I support recreation. I support disc golf at the Glen. Uh, I support all, all our parks. I did when I was on the council and I continue to do so. I just want to address a couple of things that I did here from Councilwoman McDowell. The, uh, the fact that you have three DPW positions that haven't been filled in a long time probably needs to be addressed as a wage scale issue, not as a recruitment issue. So I would look at that. And Escobar's doing that. They're getting a benefit from it. It's nice that they're doing it though as well. But DPW could do it. Or our contractor that's been mowing our parks forever could do it too. So that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Reese, Mr. Gleason, Ms. Blank. No?
Tough decision for us. I made some comments at the last, excuse me. Excuse me, uh, meeting. Voices are cooperating. Maybe, maybe it's there.
There it comes.
So, um, I pulled up the stats here again for Ninnagrit Golf. And I'm sure you folks have been there, right? Probably the ultimate place for all I know. I really don't know. But, um, there aren't many places for you to play disc golf. There appears to be a place or Roger Williams University. But they don't, they don't, you don't want to, you don't want to go there, but we do, Portsmouth does have a relationship with them. They use our football fields over here and maybe somebody could approach them. Maybe you can golf there. Personally, I don't think it belongs at Glen Park. Okay? I know you don't want to hear that. I gave you a suggestion that you do it down in the amphitheater with a nine-hole golf course for starters, but the wishful thinking here is I need eighteen holes. And I think this is just a grandiose concept that's gonna bite us in the butt. The stats from Ninnagrit show in the month of October of twenty twenty-four, five hundred and sixty-four rounds of golf. My concern is we're gonna bring too many people to the town of Portsmouth. And you're gonna lose any kind of tranquility that you have at that park, okay? I support Mrs. Davidson in Hole and anybody that was here from the start that brought these parks together for the use of Portsmouth. It's for Portsmouth people. You can invite other people here, okay? Shake your head all you want. I'm just giving you my opinion, all right? But I think it's too many people. I think there's a place in Portsmouth, but, you know, go find another place, not at Glen Park. I won't be supporting this tonight and I'm sorry to say that because I know you're, there are people that want this, but a lot of you are from out of town. All right? I'm doing this for Portsmouth. This is for the way I look at it, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Blank.
I understand the concerns. And I feel a possible probationary period might be helpful for this to see how it plays out. No pun intended. And address any concerns that do come up. So I'm making a motion for eighteen holes of disc golf with a two-year probationary period to, um, address any concerns that do arise.
I'll second it.
And I will add my two cents. Um, I walked it Thursday night, uh, with, well, my son's dog. Didn't have any issues walking the park. Uh, didn't walk all across the bridge. I didn't see the broken, broken stairs. It is situated in a way that it doesn't interfere with any of the other activities in the park. People can still walk their dogs. People can still go for a hike. People can still sit and do yoga. If we have, I know it's difficult to see them, but if we have green baskets, they blend back into the, into the, the field. If we have four by four posts that we already have four by four posts that designate a trail that starts up at the seventy fields and walks down and through the park. I don't think eighteen baskets and eighteen posts are gonna destroy the beauty of Glen Park. So I will be supporting the, the two-year, um, trial period. And, and we can get things sorted out and turn this into the financing, getting it together. We can make an agreement with, um, the five oh one C three or whatever they're gonna be. I don't know the specific, it's probably is a five oh one C three, but whatever. To allow this to start and see if it works. As Roderick mentioned, we don't really want to be digging as we go through Melville. So that's out of the question. Upper Glen is out of the question because there's already too many things going on there. This is a good spot for it. Bringing in 560 people in a monthly period is 18 people a day. So that's four foursomes. If you put four foursomes on a golf course, they're not going to see each other unless they're in a league. I do agree that Wendy may be overworked, but Wendy's got to find herself an assistant, that's her issue, not ours.
Ms. Patton?
So, as I mentioned before, I don't have a problem with disc golf. I would love to see if we can amend the motion to a trial basis of only a year, if that's possible, in a nine-hole. It just takes it away from that upper area, where Juan also said something about the cars, you know, and...
May I add one thing before you kind of put the gavel on that? We do have to go to businesses, right? That's where the funding will be coming from. If we get one year and we don't even start installation until the spring is my guess, to get everything set, how do we tell them, hey, you're going to have six months of, you know, people going on the website and seeing that you sponsored it? So if it could be a year starting from, you know, ground break, to just give us more to sell to, you know, like the local businesses that would theoretically be supporting us?
I'm sorry, so you're starting next spring?
Yeah, I would assume, I don't think we could acquire and, yeah, just wait for the thaw.
They, yeah, it's going to take time just to raise the money to buy the baskets themselves. I mean, heck, a four-by-four post nowadays probably goes for 50 bucks, right? Unfortunately, though.
Do you want to change your advisement?
Well, if there's not a second, there's no amendment to the motion, you'd have to amend your motion, so it doesn't matter. You were second, yes.
This man can accept that as a friendly amendment, if that's your preference.
Sure. Are you okay with still at the two years?
No.
No.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, because we're not going to belabor this all night long. We have a motion on the floor for 18 holes for two-year trial period. As stated by the organization, it's going to take them at least six months to raise funds to even be able to buy the baskets to get things going. I think that would be 18 months if it were up and running in the spring, to have the trial period to see what the traffic is, see if there's any other issues. I think it's a worthwhile cause to get people out. You know, when people ask questions of, well, do the people who run soccer know what's going to happen? I could see the people who are running soccer to say, hey, Mom, Dad, can we go play disc golf after we're done soccer practice? I could see softball people doing the same. Hopefully, people ride their horses through there, say, hey, there's disc golf now, I'm going to come back and go play disc golf. It's a beautiful piece of property that should be enjoyed by as many people as possible. And disc golf brings that opportunity for more people to enjoy the property. So, there's a motion and a second to approve a 24-month trial period at the Glen with 18 holes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that's four to three, Ms. Patton was a yea, yea, okay. Disc golf is approved, we will work.
I will ask the folks who are running it, Roderick, Dan, work with the administration and finance to get everything set up properly.
Yes.
Stay close with DPW and obviously the Recreation Department, make sure it's all done properly. And hopefully, everything will work out. Paul, can I request of you to get a quote from... DePont, thank you, Jen. DePont, to see what it would cost to maintain the fields mode, you know, those three fields where the disc will be, so that we can include that in the operating costs.
It would only need to be like once or twice a month, we don't mind long grass. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm more worried about you getting Lyme's disease.
Fair enough, we look forward to seeing you on the course, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. All right, we are going to move on to new business number three, which is a public hearing. And if you folks want to leave and don't want to hear about fund balances, I would suggest you get out now. Anybody in council need five minutes? Yeah. You need five minutes, go ahead, okay. Why don't we take a quick five-minute recess, and council can stretch their legs real quick?
Who knows? I did. Because I used to do ID.
Yeah, so did I.
Beijing, Ms. Blank. Thank you. Okay, next up we have new business number three, which is a public hearing. Did you consider proposed amendments to the codification of ordinances, Chapter 65, unrestricted general fund balance, so amend the ordinance to reflect funding levels of 13% to 17%? I brought this up in the budgetary timeframe, and also when we were talking about the repair of the roof, and also moving $600,000 out of the fund balance to help plus up the pension. Good general accounting principles state that you should have two months of a rainy day fund. Two months is 16.7%. That is where I came with the 13% to 17%. One of the other reasons is we have a neighbor who raided their fund balance continuously until they ran out of the fund balance and then had to fund their town, which led to a 12% tax increase and 4% for the near future. I don't want to see any other council, current or future, to start us down that path. So I would like to see the fund balance stated at 13% to 17%. So this is a public hearing, if anybody wants to get up and discuss it, please do.
Motion open.
Motion open to public hearing.
Motion open to public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Now, Mr. Grebe, you can come up. Sorry about that, little technicality.
No problem. Thank you, Tom Grebe, 110th Third Drive. For the past 15 years, town policy has been to maintain the fund balance at 8% to 16% of the previous operating budget. Because this tied the fund balance amount directly to the budget, the fund balance grows automatically as our budget grows. For context, our present budget is about $77 million, and will require a fund balance of between $6 and $12 million. Our town revenues are very stable. They are derived primarily from property taxes, rather than the more volatile sources like tourism and so forth. Our geography is not highly prone to natural disasters. We have insurance of $4 million to cover liability judgments. And our AAA credit rating confirms our strong financial position. Given these factors, I believe that maintaining an 8% to 16% range is both reasonable and sufficient. Raising the upper limit to 17% may seem to offer some additional protection, but in practice, it will do little to provide meaningful added security for the town. What concerns me more is the proposal to raise the lower percentage limit by five percentage points. Raising it from 8% to 13% could force the town to replace any outlay which is more than a quarter of the fund balance in less than a year. That defeats the fundamental purpose of a rainy day fund, which is meant to give us the flexibility to weather major problems and then manage the rebuilding of the reserve over time. An even more important issue is for the fund balance, in my opinion, is how the fund dollars are invested. With the possibility of $12 million being in the fund next year, even small differences in return rate translate into meaningful gains or missed opportunities for our taxpayers. For instance, the Fidelity Ocean State Investment Pool, designed specifically for this type of municipal investment, has recently yielded 5%. The professionally laddered U.S. Treasury bills, as used by the Portsmouth Water and Fire Department, are currently earning around 4.6%. Meanwhile, an average money market account earns closer to 3.5%. Since we are discussing the fund balance tonight, I thought it was the right time to suggest a constructive future step. Direct the Pension Investment Committee to review our current investment parameters for the fund balance and bring back to the council an investment plan that balances safety, liquidity, and yield. That way, we can be confident that these now significant reserves are being professionally overseen and are working as effectively as possible for the town, and while they fully, and that they fully comply with state requirements and best practices. In summary, our policy of an 8% to 16% fund balance range has served us well for a decade and a half. I see no reason to change it. Our real opportunity is in making sure that the large reserves we are holding are invested most prudently and productively for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe. Anybody else want to make a statement or a comment, question? From the general public? Nobody online? Going once, going twice? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Stumbled.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Any comments from the council?
Couple of questions. Is there a fund that we invest in now with this money? It just sits there at face value, correct? Okay. Do you have any initial feelings about those comments? Is that the wrong thing to do, the right thing to do, or?
I did prepare something. So I wanted to share a thought as we look ahead at Portsmouth's financial policy. The ordinance we are seeking to revise was originally approved in June of 2011. So Mr. Grebe is right, it's been 15 years. It currently sets the general fund balance target of 8% to 16%, which does align with GFOA's minimum standard. However, GFOA also recommends the general purpose government maintains no less than two months, which is what Mr. Hamilton had said, equivalent to 16.67%. Several neighboring towns have adopted more conservative policies. North Smithfield is between 12% and 16%. Charleston is 23% to 33%. Based on our current budget of $77 million, the recommended fund balance would be approximately $12.8 million. While we're still in the process of the audit, our balance will still fall shy of this level. Given rising costs and importance of building long-term financial resiliency, I believe it is worth discussing to set a higher minimum or a narrower range. That's all.
I think Mr. Gleason's question is, is how do you feel about utilizing other investment tools to help plus up conservative investment tools? Right now, it's in a money market account.
I could look into it.
The 12.8% that we're at now, okay?
12.8 million.
12.8 million, excuse me. Where does that fall in percentage-wise?
The 12.8 million would be our two-month reserve.
Okay, two months, all right.
That's where we would be to follow the GFOA's recommend- That's where we would be to follow the GFOA's recommend, recommendation.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I just, I just don't know how you would come up with your number to raise it, that five percent increase.
Because I'm afraid of other future councils going too low, just for the heck of it. Like I said, I, I point directly to Little Compton. Who continually raided the rainy day fund until it started pouring out and they had to go twelve percent and go to the state and ask for specific legislations to do that. I would be afraid of a council sitting up here and say, we're going to do the right thing and we're going to make our taxes increase zero this year. Take the money out of the fund balance and next thing you know, somebody has a fifteen percent tax increase instead of a conservative tax increase each year.
I guess, I guess the way I'm looking at it, maybe, maybe I'm looking at it wrong mathematically, is that if we don't make these numbers, then we have to increase the taxes to make up for the shortfall.
If you wanted to bring the lower number down to ten or eleven, that's fine.
Yeah.
But our goal should be to get to that sixteen, that two-month rainy day month.
Absolutely, I agree with you there. Just think that it just makes it a little bit too tight. I, I don't know.
We raided it once this year already, at six hundred thousand.
And we paid it back.
And we will be paying it back. Once the audit's done.
Okay. I would make a motion to support a range of.
Okay, we can have, we can have questions after.
Ten percent is a low range, seventeen percent is a high range.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Oh, second.
Okay. Representative McGaw. Sorry, I picked on the other town you represent.
That's actually why I decided that I would get up and speak. I just want to reiterate what you said. That's exactly what happened in Little Compton, where there was such a desire not to raise taxes that funds were used from other avenues in an effort not to raise those taxes, and it left them in a significant hole, to the point where they had, this year, we had to give them special approval. It went before the town financial meeting to raise taxes by twelve percent. We do not want Portsmouth to end up in that situation, so I just wanted to concur with what you said, and I've, I've had to do it for one of the towns that I represent, and my preference would be to never have to do that again.
Ironically, I think the proposal was eleven point five and the town citizens voted for twelve.
Eleven point one.
Eleven point one. So they actually.
Remarkably so.
Tax increase, yeah?
Remarkably so.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Grebe?
Tom Grebe, one ten third drive. I just wanted to quickly emphasize that the ordinance that we have now makes it illegal to bring the fund balance down below six million dollars. You could not, you could never, under the ordinance you have today, unless you're doing something illegal, get to the position that Little Compton found itself in.
Ms. Blank.
Would it be possible, Kayla, to look at investment ideas for our current fund balance as a, am I understanding it correctly? Or, or Rich, I'm sorry.
Let's jump in here. I mean, I think it's a great idea. The only thing I would caution is you'd have to pick that investment vehicle carefully to ensure that it's something that you can pull out without penalty, because a rainy day's rate ain't.
Yeah.
Fun. You don't know what the emergency's going to be until the Portsmouth High School roof caves in. So you don't want to put yourself in a position where we are paying a penalty to get money that we've been putting aside as a rainy day fund, but putting it in a, a vehicle that will give us better interest other than where it is now? Absolutely, let's, let's do it.
Yeah, can we just look at, I don't know enough about that. Can we just look at some of those options and review? Or just hear, hear more of what those options are for the town?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
So what we're trying to prevent is a future town council from making basically bad decisions and basically malfeasance is what I'd call that. I mean, that's.
And also to not put us.
I mean, you could, you can't, you can't decide what somebody else is going to do. I mean, what we've had in place now for like fourteen years is basically self-correcting. The, the fund balance that's in there now monetarily, I mean, the numbers stay the same as far as the percentages, but it increases in a linear relationship with an increased budget. So if your budget doubles, the amount you've got in your reserve doubles, so I don't think it needs to be changed. I mean, you'd have to, I don't know what happened to Little Compton. I don't know how they were able to make those decisions without anybody noticing on the whole council or anybody, even in the government noticing, you know, it's, that should just should not have happened. And I don't think you're going to control what other people do by just increasing it. That's a real narrow percentage rate which you've selected.
Okay, but the motion is ten to seventeen.
Yeah.
It's been changed.
I, because like I said, because it's a linear relationship, I don't think you really need to change it at all. I mean, you haven't had a problem in fifteen years and we've weathered a lot of storms.
Not really. When I first started, the fund balance was very, very small and it took.
Well, if you're talking monetarily, probably so, but as the budget increases and you have to maintain this, the number goes up. You're, you're, you're talking more dollars.
You're, the percent that was funded between oh eight and eleven, when this was changed, was minuscule. The linear relationship you're speaking of only happens if we have surpluses. We need to maintain quality budgeting. And my concern is that anytime there's a speed bump or a perceived notion that something is underfunded, we're going to grab money out of the fund balance and we're going to be below the levels, and it's a slippery slope I don't want to see this town get into. If you don't want to support it, that's fine. Ms. McDowell.
Thanks. First of all, I think that this has served us well, and I do think that this is kind of a knee-jerk reaction to a one-time thing that we did that, that really, really is replenished. So I think the slap on the hand by putting this in here, I don't think it will serve us well. We have an ordinance, as Mr. Grebe said, that definitely does not allow us to go below the eight percent. And I, I would ask that, Mr. Gleason, reconsider, because this has served us well. We are a council, I feel, and I feel the councils that are elected by the people are going to do their due diligence and not end up in a situation like Little Compton. And I don't think we should be reacting to a one-time and doing a knee-jerk reaction on an ordinance that has served us well. So I would ask Mr. Gleason if you could reconsider.
If I reconsider, you would, you're going to go to, with eight and sixteen, leave it as is or just not pass it? Okay, I would retract my motion.
Fine, I mean, I, listen. Knee-jerk reaction gets a knee-jerk reaction. We didn't need to pull six hundred thousand dollars out of the fund balance to put it into a pension fund that is already well-funded and has a plan in order to fund itself. But we did. There are other concerns with the fund balance other than just our lower level. Mr. Grebe brought up our pension, our, our bond rating. If we continue to take money out, our bond rating will go down. If we don't maintain close to sixteen percent as required, our bond rating will go down. We go out to bid next year, potentially, for multimillion-dollar repairs for the school system and town, potentially. Who knows what's going to come up? A lower bond costs us a ton more money. So don't think about this as one knee-jerk reaction. This is a long-term financial plan, not just a knee-jerk reaction to an ill-thought-out six hundred thousand dollar pool out of our system.
I take your reprimand well. I, I would also just like to ask if we could consider, and this is the time to do it. I mean, Mr. Grebe talked about other vehicles that can get us more interest, and I see, I see that we are going to look into it. Just being part of the pension committee, being a liaison, those people on that pension committee are very astute in, in researching, and, and I think it's, it was a great suggestion to maybe ask them to also help with our, looking at our general fund and looking at our investment and seeing if we can do better. Because I do think that we are not maximizing and still being safe our potential with eleven or twelve million dollars. That's.
Ms. Reese?
Yes, I was going to say, our bond rating has been stable for a long time. Correct?
It has been triple-A since twenty fourteen, thirteen? Yes.
Well, then what do you think is going to, all of a sudden, you're, you're just like predicting doom and gloom. We're going to overspend, we're going to hit, we get hit with this, we got to have all this money, the bond rating's going to collapse. We're going to be good stewards of the money and that's, that's what we're getting elected for, and if it isn't just us, it should be every council. I, I, I don't support making any changes. Okay?
Ms. Bayer?
I, I will say this. At first, I was kind of like many of them, my fellow colleagues were, I, I told the president, I will not support this, and then he won me over. I think that this is good accounting practices, and I will further and even say that I will make a motion to consider the amendment as presented.
Second.
The motion was to consider the amendment as presented, which would be a thirteen to seventeen. Ms. Patton? Oh, you just want that clarification? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I think we already know where this is going to go. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
Ms. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Motion fails, fails, excuse me, fails. Easy. Mr. Gleason?
It didn't pass, correct?
It did not pass.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we table it, pending, sending this back to the, our Pension Review Committee, whatever our money wizards are.
Well, we can't send it to the Pension Review Committee because they're, A, the Pension Advisory Committee, they're not the Fund Balance Advisory Committee, so the first thing we'd have to do is change their charter. I think we have a finance department. Or their bylaws. We have a finance department that can do it and they can bring it back to us, and then we'll can go from there.
That sounds pretty.
I wish the people in the back knew that they echo, we could hear everything they say and moan. Okay. Yeah, that too. All right. Next up. New business number four, legal counsel drafted possible update to town position discussing, discussion and edit only regarding Quinick Island long-term gas capacity study. Everybody has had this, looked at it. It is not written in resolution form. The date does need to be changed to reflect tonight, not tomorrow. Are there any other changes or comments made by council? Members? This covers, I believe, all of our thoughts that the facility at Old Mill Lane needs to go away. I know there are others who would like to see the moratorium because it would get people further off natural gas. My main concern is that a moratorium and the prices of energy in the greater New England area are just going to continue to rise, especially when we look at new business number five and that situation. That we are going to be forcing higher and higher energy prices onto our already struggling citizens to pay bills. That we need an all-in energy policy at this point in time until better technology comes along to correct all that ails us.
Mr. President.
Ms. Bayer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I'm one that, you and I have discussed this, cannot support the, the potential resolution just because I do support the moratorium. But in drafting this, I, I also believe that number four in the town requesting Rhode Island Energy to incentivize alternatives to natural gas, the alternative to that, the, the incentive is the moratorium. So I think it's a little redundant, not redundant, but it's counterintuitive in, in saying that you want to be able to incentivize residents to get off of natural gas, but then at the same time, trying to end the moratorium that is going to incentivize especially commercial businesses in Middletown and Newport to hook up without having the infrastructure in place in order to mitigate the concerns that cause the moratorium to begin with. That, that aside, I also don't think that natural, I think that we, you alluded to it, I think that we should be looking forward and looking at alternatives, but ending the moratorium is a thing that would shoot ourselves in the foot in order to be able to get to that place.
Well, there currently isn't a moratorium right now. The moratorium is, would be more of a stick rather than a carrot.
Long night.
I believe there are other ways that Nash, I keep going back to Nash, Rhode Island Energy can utilize the money that we all pay in our electric bills and our gas bills, if you have gas, to help fund those conversions if need be. I think the carrot is already there. Moratorium is a stick and says, hey, you can't get gas now, you've got to go electric because we're going to eventually, at the State House, say you can't use oil anymore. And if we do a moratorium and they cut off oil, then where do we go? We start charging people exorbitant amounts of, of cost to heat their home in the wintertime with electric heat. That's my concern, if we don't have, if we have a moratorium.
I see your point, I just respectfully disagree.
Ms. McDowell?
Okay. Okay. I do, and this is on four, too. I think they left out one word, and I would like to see it say that the town requests Rhode Island Energy incentivizes alternatives to conserve natural gas. That's really what you want to do. You don't want to find alternatives to it, you want to conserve natural gas so that that's one way of increasing demand. I mean, we're supposed to be editing this, so it's, it, the merits of moratorium or no moratorium is not what we're asked to do tonight. We're just supposed to develop a, you know, a good format to come back with. And I think that maybe, and I just would like to ask if anybody's got any comments?
So.
On that.
So specifically, the town requests Rhode Island Energy incentivize alternatives to natural gas and accelerate programs to reduce the natural.
Would now lead incentivize.
And to help conserve.
Or you could rewrite it that way, but incentivize alternatives, cons, okay.
You taking notes over there, Chair? Okay. All right. Hang on to that, Mr. Reese, and we can make that, you can make that a motion in a minute. Ms. McDowell, you have a comment, question?
Yeah, I just want to concur with the counselor, and I, I do believe that a moratorium is important. I do believe that it could act as an incentive to do something they haven't, I feel they haven't done yet, and especially in the area of, of number four and five. So, you know, I, I support a moratorium.
Okay, so then you don't support the resolution as written? Okay. Ms. Blank, Mr. Gleason, Ms. Patton? Nothing? Okay.
If you want to make that change, I'm fine with that. I, I do support a moratorium. I mean, not, I oppose a moratorium, excuse me.
Get it right there.
See, it's not just me saying it, yeah. See? So I, I, Mr. Reese, if you would like, the motion would be to, to change number four, the town requests that Rhode Island Energy incentivize alternatives to nat, alternatives and conservation efforts to, for natural gas and accelerate programs to reduce, no. Well, wordsmith it yourself, my friend.
Well, I want to, I still want to just put the word conserve in after incentivize alternatives to conserve. after incentivize alternatives to conserve natural gas.
Okay, so you just wanna put incentivize alternatives to help conserve natural gas? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
To, yeah, and it just says to reduce natural gas demand, which is what you're trying to do.
That's at the end, yeah. So that's still there. So that didn't change, it's just alternatives to.
Things work together.
Okay. Mr. Solicitor, you get that?
That's your motion?
Yes, that would be a motion.
All right, second.
So it's a motion just to make that change?
Correct, right.
All those in favor of the change, not the overall motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. Are there any other changes? Mary, I'm sorry. Any other changes or concerns on here other than the date, which was changed recently? Date in the middle? And then we obviously have to vote in. Is there a motion to pass the position, not the resolution, but as amended with the changes of the date to the eighth? And Mr. Reese's amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions?
So this, this would mean that this, we're voting on this with the amendment. We're doing a vote, and this will be our position, whatever that.
That'll be the position of the council, yes.
Yes, right?
What is written here, yes.
What is written here with the amendment. So actually, we are, it's not a resolution, but we are, we are voting on a position of the council.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McDonald, you wanna?
Oh, all right.
Yes, I would.
I give you a second while Mr. Reese is thinking here.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead. No, you're up. You're up, Mr. McDonald. He's still thinking. You can speak while he's thinking.
My name's Stephen McDonald. I live at 124 Old Mill Lane, Portsmouth. For those of you who do not know me, I live directly across the street from the Rhode Island Energy LNG transfer station located at Old Mill Lane. Mr. Hamilton and I have been working on this thing for over five years now. In previous discussions and written remarks to the town council, various boards in the Rhode Island Energy Sitting Facility Board, I've discussed my strong objections to the location of this industrial facility. I'm not going to go over one of those, every one of those reasons right now. Quite frankly, I'm not going to. Unless you ask me questions, I'm not going to address that. However, I have not changed my opinion that an expanded facility with more capacity does not belong at old, on Old Mill Lane. I am going to keep my comments brief and focus on my belief that there must be a natural gas hookup moratorium on a Quintic Island. Rhode Island's Act on Climate Status mandates statewide greenhouse gas emission reductions of 45% below 1990 levels by 2030. That's five years from now. 80% by 2040, and a net zero emissions by 2050. I will probably be dead by then, but the other two I hope to be around for. It also grants state agencies the authority to promulgate rules and regulations necessary to achieve the emissions reduction. After seeing what I saw up there, I said to myself, wait a minute, we don't have to go to Rhode Island Energy at all and ask for any type of concessions from them or incentives. The state has the ability to order them to do things. It's as simple as that. So by not supporting a moratorium, you're essentially telling the state government, eh, hands off, we really don't care. I don't think that's really what you mean, though. I don't think our state can meet those standards if we don't stop additional gas hookups. And I've got a whole slew of reasons why, but unless you ask me questions, I'm not gonna go into that. There have been countless federal independent and United Nations agency studies and reports that have proven human-caused global warming is real. If you're unfamiliar with these studies, I'd be happy to send you links to the applicable agencies. Just send me an email, I'll get it to you. Your vote on this matter will send a very real message to the Quintic community, especially to those young adults at Portsmouth High School. You're essentially saying yea or nay to let's get off of gas. Let's save the planet. A vote in favor of a gas hookup moratorium will indicate that the 2025 Portsmouth Town Council supports this vitally important legislation to help mitigate human-caused global warming. A vote against a moratorium means that the 2025 Town Council does not care about human-caused global warming and is looking to push the issue to the next generation. That's you. It's that simple. Doesn't get any more complex than that. For future generations, we must start with a national gas hookup moratorium. We owe it to our grandkids' generations to start putting immediate financial gains for a very select privileged few. That's those people right now, I hate to say this, in Newport and Middletown that wanna put those hotels up over the greater good of us all. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
You're welcome.
Representative McGaw. Unless, Mr. Reese, you thought? No, you're good? Okay. Representative McGaw, go ahead.
Shell McGaw, 58, Camaro Drive. I wanna start with a question. I'm just kinda curious, and maybe this is for the solicitor, but in looking at the agenda item, it says possible updated town position for discussion and edit only. So I'm wondering if the council can vote on this since it doesn't say that on the agenda. It says only for discussion.
It would have to come back as a finalized resolution at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, voting to approve the statement, language that was agreed to. Yeah. But it would have to come back as a authorization for the administrator or a resolution, however you wanna put it back together.
I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to be sure of that. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I have been coming to these meetings long enough to have been here when Rhode Island Energy brought in some proposals for alternatives to the Old Mill Lane facility. And key in those proposals was the need for us to reduce the demand on gas on a Quintic Island. And that was a proposal that was brought forward. It wasn't done because it was gonna cost Rhode Island Energy too much money, but at the time, that was one of the reasons that the town was supportive of a moratorium. Now, I appreciate within this proposed resolution that you are sharing your concerns about Old Mill Lane. But I think, I think what we heard earlier hits, hits it right on, hits the nail right on the head, that a moratorium is the incentive for Rhode Island Energy to come up with solutions to the Old Mill Lane problem. It is supposed to be a temporary solution. Five years later, it's still there. It's still called a temporary solution, but they have done nothing to come up with solutions to reduce the need for a facility on Old Mill Lane. And I've been told there are no plans to do so. So this temporary facility continues. And so the only leverage that we have to make them do something about a gas facility in a residential neighborhood is to impose a moratorium. Not indefinitely, I mean, ideally, I would love it for it to be indefinitely, but recognizing some of the concerns around the economic impacts. I would like this proposal to include a moratorium until Rhode Island Energy comes up with a solution so that we no longer need a facility in a residential neighborhood putting our residents at risk. So that's my proposal. I think that the, it's the only, only leverage that we have. And if we tell Rhode Island Energy that we don't support a moratorium, we are giving them carte blanche to keep that facility going for as long as they'd like. The only options for us are to, are to reduce gas demand until they can come up with a better solution.
Well, there's only one solution, and that's a secondary pipeline. Period, that's it. That's the only solution that's gonna stop it.
Well, we did hear other solutions from Rhode Island Energy as part of the initial proposal. There were other solutions.
There was a solution to put it on the Navy base, and that was a no. There was Old Mill Lane, there's a moratorium, and there's a pipeline. That's it.
And reducing demand was also part of the proposal.
And reducing demand in this, in the current state of the world that we live in is gonna crush our residents.
I understand, I understand your concerns, but I also believe in my heart that we should not be putting the residents of that neighborhood at risk.
I agree with you 100% on that. Senator Ujafusa?
Thank you for letting me speak. I wanna start by saying that, believe it or not, across the political spectrum, we do agree on one thing, right? We wanna try to lower the energy costs of our constituents, right? So the question is tonight, does this moratorium really help our constituents pay lower energy costs? And I would say the answer to that is no. Because you have to remember who's really pushing the additional pipelines, things. It is Rhode Island Energy. And they don't make their money by selling you gas and electric. They make their money by building infrastructure, which is pipes and LNG facilities. And if you look up, you'll see that they are guaranteed a return on their investment of anywhere from around 9% to 11%. And what they do is they build things and they pass those costs right to the consumers. And so when you're saying that the only solution is to build another pipeline or do a loop or anything like that, what you're saying really is that you want to force more costs onto our consumers, not less. And second, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I wanna force a safer program that's not gonna cause whatever number, 10,000 households, to be without heat in the middle of a cold winter like happened in 2019.
Absolutely, we all want that. But that was not due to a problem with the fact there is only one pipe.
That is exactly what the issue was.
Absolutely not. I can show you.
I can show you why it was the fact that we only had one pipeline.
No, it was the fact.
It was.
It was a, do you agree that it was a supply problem?
Yes.
Okay.
It would have been fixed if we had, it would not have cascaded to failure if there was a second pipeline.
That's not true.
It's simple physics, yes.
It is, I can tell you the simple physics is that there's stuff coming. I'll try to speak simply. There's supply coming from Tiverton to Portsmouth, okay? There's supply. Why would another pipe increase that supply?
Because that pipe would be coming from the north end, and it would loop around and fix that.
Fine, so your solution is to put another pipeline into a Quintic Island, which would cost hundreds of millions of dollars. Do you disagree with that? I can show you the estimate. Hundreds of millions of dollars to put a second line in? And for who, and to whose benefit? The folks in Middletown and Newport who are trying to build these giant buildings?
And the people in Portsmouth who could have lost their heat as well.
It's not a question of protecting them from the cold and dark weather. It is, it is that.
Those people in Newport would disagree with you.
It is a question of how to best do that in a way that makes sense. And the way that they can make, what they decided when they looked at all the analyses was let's put an LNG facility on Old Mill Lane. That was the cheapest, best, safest thing they did. And so what did that do? That left our constituents sitting there with an LNG facility, which in your resolution, you claim to want to get rid of as close, when feasible. I think that when you increase demand from having more hookups and the supply is not actually increasing, that is going to increase the prices on our constituents. It is not going to decrease it. And also, we have to remember that there are no new supplies coming online at lower costs. In fact, gas prices are notoriously volatile, swinging wildly with global demand and conflicts like the war in Ukraine, right? So Rhode Island already lived through this in 2022 when the rate spiked nearly 47%. And that was not because we were playing around with green energy. That was because the price of gas is determined on global markets and global events, not renewables. So when you're talking about what we can do to best protect our constituents, and let's start with the guys on Old Mill Lane, then we have to have a source of energy that we is able to have the prices controlled and is not subject to these wild swings. And if it wasn't for the PUC stepping in, it would have been even worse. I believe they asked, let's see, Rhode Island Energy, which, folks, we cannot forget that this is a private, for-profit corporation, and they have a monopoly. And that is why we have something called the PUC. When you have a natural monopoly, then you must have a government agency overseeing their price increases, or they're gonna charge whatever the heck they want, right? And PUC has stepped in, and they try to keep the prices lower. But what you're suggesting is not going to do that because, again, you are incentivizing them to build more infrastructure, which could be, I think you've heard this term, they could be left to have, give us infrastructure that is not going to be used in the future. But that doesn't matter. We have to pay those hundreds of millions of dollars to build those extra pipes, no matter what. And that is a cost that will live with us, and we can't get rid of going forward, no matter what happens. And I think it'll come out in a consideration of Juan Carlos's resolution about the wind power being shut down. We are basically witnessing a situation where we're, at this moment, able to, as Rep. McGaw said, have a little leverage over a giant for-profit corporation that is trying to make a profit the only way they can. And that is to encourage them to try not to just keep building endless amounts of infrastructure, but instead, look at alternatives to that. And so I would urge you to vote against getting rid of the moratorium because by getting rid of it, you are actually condemning Portsmouth to higher prices and our neighbors to living with a dangerous LNG facility nearby.
Thank you. We're gonna agree to disagree that the pipeline would have not, would have solved that issue.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to get that information to you.
You don't have it because even Rhode Island Energy agreed with me that that would have solved the issue.
I do have it, Mr. Hamilton, and so we will agree to disagree on that.
Mr. President, what she's discussing is not what's on the agenda. We're just supposed to edit this and discuss this tonight, and that's it. So we're not voting on the agenda tonight, the moratorium tonight. So when we get it rewritten, why don't you come back?
I'm happy to. But we are talking about what's in this resolution, and it says moratorium.
We're not gonna, when are we gonna vote on this? It might not be for.
Next meeting?
All right.
Next meeting? By next year? Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Where the heck are we? We have a motion to, to change it and bring it back, which would be the 22nd, 22nd? Correct.
I have.
Because it's not gonna take you much to make those edits.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay.
A request to table even this motion on just with I was fully up to date, but there is some new information I just would like to look into before even voting on this.
We have two weeks to do that.
Would that be possible to even table this?
Well, it's not it's not really
Going to be
Up for a vote, so it's essentially tabled by by function of how it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
I think you get your two weeks, no matter what.
Thank you.
So so does this come back as a resolution, or does this come back just as a position? I mean, is it gonna be a resolution or?
The last time we sent it, it was in the same exact format as it is now.
And that's most likely what it will be?
It's just a it's just a a letter into the record to the PUC or the
To somebody's semantics, the letter states the position of the council, which is the same thing a resolution would do, so it's it's the position of the council.
It just doesn't say whereas and what for and whatnot and all those other resolution-y things. Okay? Everybody's good. You've got your changes to correct? I do. We'll bring it back on the 22nd. We'll have another discussion. And now we'll request a resolution for
You just need to actually vote on that.
No.
Nope.
The vote was just to make the amendment Mr. Reese made. That was it. We did? Yes, we did. It was five to two.
Okay. Sorry, what was going on with the other one?
Okay, Mr. Perro and Miss McDowell. McDowell in the negative. New business number five, request a resolution for the U.S. Bureau of Ocean Energy Management to rescind stop work order issued on Revolution Wind Project, Mr. Perro. And I'm gonna caution the audience to keep this to Revolution Wind. We are not gonna talk about any other wind project, and specifically the project that was canceled on Revolution Wind.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm bringing forward this resolution regarding the federal government to allow the completion of the Revolution Wind Project. This resolution is not about the merits of the project. This is where it's where we are at and moving forward. Thinking long term and once completed, the project will provide homes with more reliable power at competitive rates, good-paying union jobs, and will also strengthen our local economy. Going back to what we were saying about this golf, there are secondary and tertiary benefits to this project. With construction well underway at about 80%, it doesn't make sense to stop progress and risk higher costs, missed opportunities, and the protect the potential for tax burden caused by almost certain litigation at the federal level. Additionally, North Kingston side of this project is almost near completion. This resolution simply urges the Bureau to rescind the stop work order so that the project can move forward and deliver the benefits that Rhode Islanders have been promised, and I respectfully ask for your support.
Can I ask you for an amendment?
Gladly.
Okay. And I don't know where to put this in here, but the cable has been run. It's landed in North Kingston. There are some hiccups in terms of hooking into the grid. There are, I believe, 45 of the 65 turbines standing.
Yes.
Would you be okay with saying, let's get the 45 online and then see how they work out before we build anymore? The 45 are gonna sit out there and rot and do nothing.
And just so
Or we can actually maybe get some energy out of them. But we stop the construction of anything new.
I would be open to I would be open to amending for the anything new portion of this project, as long as it is explicit to this project. But my only concern would be, and given this is a resolution, it holds no legal weight. It is just an opinion. I I I'm not sure about those additional turbines and where they're at in terms of construction based on the same research that I I we've both reviewed. Because they put everything online. I just I'm not sure enough to say, hey, this is where we're at with this project.
And I don't know where to put it in here. But I i- if there's if there's 45 done, and there's two more that are half-built, finish those off and then stop. I the the extra 20, if they're not even in the beginning process of it, which they may be, would be a nice place to meet in the middle. Because with the 45 out there, we'll have a much better idea, even though everybody is 100% either way, that they're killing whales or not killing whales. Or fishing's gonna suffer, or fishing's not gonna suffer. Having the 45 actually up and running for a few years will actually prove it. Now, I know there's a lot of fishermen who fish off the ones that are off Block Island. But we don't know how these are gonna change the migratory patterns of the fish that are currently going through this general area. I think the 45 will give us a pretty good test before we get into larger fields.
So hear me out on this one. So where it says the therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth Town Council respectfully urges the Bureau to rescind the work stop order issued by to the Revolution Wind Project and allow for the completion of already commenced projects.
Not already commenced projects, because this rescission rescission order is specific to revolution.
So already
partially finished turbines in this project.
If it, yeah, I I'm I'm willing to amend to that.
Can you repeat that?
Geopokeup. So
I just wanted to make sure Jen's got it. I'm leaving this one on
Now for be it further resolved that the Portsmouth Town Council respectfully urges the U.S. Bureau of Energy and Bomb to rescind a stop work order issued to Revolution Wind and allow the development to continue with partially
Of
to continue
With the already existing
With the already existing and partially completed
Wind turbines.
Turbines. Partially completed. So if the tower's already up and they just haven't put the nacelle on it or the blades, seems silly to not finish that part, but if they have 15 or 10 that they haven't even started digging into the ground yet, let's not dig into the ground.
I I I'm willing and open to this because it is strictly to this project, and I I I would say I'd rather something than nothing. Again, this doesn't hold the weight of of law. It is it is just something that I think that we need to be able to put it out there, that there are that there are other implications than just this project. People work at these projects. People visit businesses that are associated with it. We have other businesses that are depending on this business. And I think that we just need to be mindful of that while in thinking about this stop order for the project.
This McDowell?
Yeah, I I would just like some clarity on two, three, four. The the fourth whereas, no, the fifth whereas, the project also holds potential to create spin-off opportunities for Portsmouth Marine Industry and related local businesses strengthening the town's working waterfront and maritime economy. Could someone just speak to that and give me more clarity on that?
I think that just had to do with the fact that we do have, although our Marina Park is smaller compared to other projects and in comparison to New Bedford, but it is still we we still have a maritime economy here in town.
I think somebody from the maritime economy is gonna lighten us. She could definitely speak better.
Yes. Terry Courtfriend, 46 Mary Lane. And I am the owner of a small maritime business in Melville. And I have seen growth in my business from coming from the offshore wind companies that are have been out there developing the project business. I wouldn't have had products I wouldn't have been able to sell if this business hadn't if this project hadn't materialized. So I think that it speaks, the resolution speaks to that perfectly.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll just add.
Kill yours.
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, this I'm not a big, big supporter of offshore wind farms in our oceans, but this this, I think, particular project, because it is 75 to 80% complete, according to all information that I've read, I I just don't think it's fair to the people of Rhode Island or people anywhere where a project has been started, permitting has been done. And we can argue the fact, I know there is there are pending court cases on various levels regarding this, but one of the things that I read was that it was, you know, it was being stopped because of national security issues. But the Department of Defense is part of this permitting process right along the way. And if there were those things, that would have been brought forward long before this. So I I understand this administration is against all wind projects, but I I don't think it's fair to people who have gone through this to have the rug pulled out from under them at at the whim of of an administration. So if that can happen there, it can happen to us. If you have a council that, you know, they've gone through permitting on a particular thing, and you have a council that wants to change an ordinance like that, it's not fair when they're 75 to 80%. So I'm I'm really in favor of this because it's a slap in the face for anyone who has gone through this up until this point and now not allowed to do that. The courts will play out anyways, but that's why I'm I'm in favor of it. With with the amendment, with the amendment.
I'm okay with him. I was just gonna say, all right.
Amendment really makes me feel
We need to get the recording. We agreed twice tonight.
I know. No, I must. We must be on drugs or something.
It's still late hour. Ms. Hanley, if you want to unmute yourself, we'll get you online.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, great. I am Islyn Hanley. I work with Climate Jobs Rhode Island, so we work with many of the unions, community groups, and climate organizations in the state. I currently live in Providence, but I'm a lifelong Rhode Islander. I just want to thank the committee for allowing me to make these comments, and I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution. I appreciate the comments that Counselor McDowell just shared. You know, we have this project is 80% complete. We have workers who are currently offshore, stuck in limbo, wondering if they're gonna be getting to work. We have workers onshore who are waiting for the call to get back to work. These are jobs in construction. It'll be jobs in operations and maintenance. These are skilled union tradesmen and women who live in our state who just want to go back to work. So I really appreciate this resolution being put forward. And as it's been brought up a few times tonight, we're facing really high energy costs. We felt that impact this year. ISO New England, the overseer of our regional transmission system, they were counting on Revolution Wind for the upcoming years. That was part of their planned energy mix. If this project is remained stopped and this order is not rescinded, it's gonna impact the amount of energy. We're not gonna be able to meet the demand that we need, particularly in the winter. So allowing this project to finish is gonna let us keep our homes warm and powered in the winter. So I think it's really important that we make sure that this project is allowed to be completed. It's been huge investments in the state of Rhode Island, into our ports. It's provided family sustaining careers for our residents. Obviously, this, you know, remaining stopped is gonna hurt jobs. It's it's losing millions of dollars a week. It's it's hurting businesses in our communities. So thank you for the opportunity to provide comments, and I greatly encourage the council to approve this motion and and put forth this this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to comment?
Good evening, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening and thank you, council members. It cannot be said enough. Thank you for your service. My name is Katie Hamilton Keywars, and we have property on Old Mill. I just want to see a show of hands, the council member, and how many of you have had an opportunity to review any of the administrative records tied to Revolution Wind's permitting? Okay, there's thousands of pages, and I've been reading them for years. And so I say that because I think that's a major part of what's going on. I also want to know if anybody here knows about the attack on the coal? Okay, in October 2012, on 2020, 11 months before 9/11, a U.S. Navy destroyer was refueling in the port of Yemen when a suicide bomber, just in a simple boat, came up in his motorized boat and detonated 1,000 pounds of explosives. It blew a hole inside of the ship, killed 17, and many more were injured because there is no security wrapped around that ship. So when we're talking about security, this is not something that we can decide in one moment. Things often come to light later on, things that were overlooked. I would just say this is a debate that should not be partisan at all. It doesn't matter if you voted for or against this president or for somebody else. This is about our community, and history has proved that Democrats and Republicans both have pulled the wool out from under a project partway through. You need only look at Keystone XL, for an example, that was stopped after significant investments in construction. The principle is clear. When serious legal, environmental, or security risks come to light, our government, regardless who's in there, and it's not just one person, there's a whole bunch of them down there in Washington. It's where I grew up. I'm thrilled to be up here, by the way. We need to review, and we need to reassess. They've done it before. This is nothing new. This is not an attack. This is a concern. There's also a term called the certainty myth. I came in to the belief that we really probably need wind. In fact, saw windmills all over New Hampshire when my son was in school there. But I learned a lot, and I realized that my certainty was completely swayed the more I read about offshore wind. Please open your mind and be curious, okay? I believe that more eyes on anything, especially something this significant, is really important. And all we're talking about now is a review. Orsted is the one behind Revolution Wind. They rebranded in 2017 from Donk, Danish Oil and Natural Gas. They are natural gas and oil and money. This is a drop in the bucket for them. I'm just throwing out the financials. So while Revolution is being touted as 80% done, let's also just remember that there's huge issues with toxicity over in Quonset, which is delaying the project. So asking them to do 45 or whatever, who knows, whatever your resolution will be, they still have to work on all of the contaminations over there. For you to vote in favor of Revolution Wind, this this would be also to encourage a potentially devastating work simply because a lot of work's already been done. To approve this, the turbines, because the turbines are rising offshore, would set a dangerous precedent, a precedent of financial sunk costs, a drop in the bucket for a massive corporation, being more important than your community, more important than the law, more important than recognizing continually changing science. If we got if we didn't analyze things regularly, a lot of people in this room might think the world is still flat. It's not. In 1972, Brown University's climate exchange habitat said that right now we would be in an ice age. We all can take a minute to reassess what we believe and be open to discussion. This government is just trying to be open to making sure that everything leading up to this, which is not just the last four or eight years, this has been going on for over a decade, if this was done properly. The council's being asked to endorse a resolution before the need for additional critical reviews are complete, before ongoing litigation has been resolved, and before public has had their fair opportunity to scrutinize the full record of information that would come to light with these kinds of discoveries. I don't want to go into a lot of things that I could with the thousands of pages I've read, and I'll stick to Revolution Wind. But we got 11 farms going, and I'm reading them all day long. I'm a consultant consulting party on most of them. This meeting, staying here till midnight, 1 o'clock, I don't care. I'm reading things and doing things because I care so much about our community, where these things are gonna run, how much they're gonna vibrate, what EMFs are gonna happen, anything. But right now, But right now, thank our government for actually stepping back and going, let's get another set of eyes on this. Let's figure this out. Let's bring in some independent scientists, which they did. There's a full article in the Wall Street Journal. Happy to send it to all of you guys. But I respectfully, one, thank you again for your public service, urge you to vote against this resolution at this time. Doing so is not about stopping progress at all. It is about ensuring, ensuring that progress follows. The law safeguards the environment, protects long-term well-being of Portsmouth. Quite frankly, I don't want jobs happening because of this if later on, we can't eat the fish that are in there or there are no fish. And when people point to Block Island, guys, that's an easy bake oven compared to what we're doing right now. And it's a completely different environment, sorry, environmental attraction for fish because all the materials and everything on the bottom of the ocean is completely different than Revolution Wind. It is not comparing bananas and apples and oranges. It's comparing a chair to a car to a TV. They're completely different. I want to thank you so much for your time, regardless of your vote. It matters that you're here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Just pull, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. Sandra Craig, Indian Avenue in Middletown. I'm a property owner, and I'm here because I'm deeply concerned about the haste with which you've brought your motion this evening in support of rescinding Bohem's stop-work order on Revolution Wind. I respectfully urge you to deny this, do not adopt this resolution. There's been actually no meaningful public notice, no opportunity for public input. I only found out about this by happenstance. So I'm here this evening because I'm deeply concerned. And I must ask you, as the previous speaker did as well, have you guys been reading these thousands of pages? I spend all my evenings, ask my husband. I mean, I'm up all night reading this stuff. There are hundreds of pages in the environmental impact statement. Hundreds. There are hundreds and hundreds of pages in all of this, on the record of decision. I mean, and it's not just for Revolution Wind. There are many, many issues that are corresponding and overlap. But we're only going to talk about Revolution this evening. So I would beg you not to go forward with this until you've had a chance to actually study this. It's not easy. It's really not easy. It's been two years I've been looking into it. Good governance, I would suggest to you, absolutely demands that there be transparency, that we know on what you're basing your decision. Sir, I'm asking you to demonstrate to this group and to the public, what are the documents you're basing your resolution on? Until, by the way, the federally mandated reviews are completed, you really have no basis for going forward. You must stop. The Department of the Interior, the Justice Department, and Bohem are still looking into Revolution Wind's compliance with the Outer Continental Shelf Lands Act, the National Environmental Policy Act, the Clean Water Act, the Endangered Species Act, and the Marine Mammals Protection Act. These are not small, small questions. These are huge. And if you haven't done your homework yet, I really don't think you can weigh in on this, no pun intended. As the previous speaker also mentioned, the Justice Department is looking into all the litigation to see if any of it needs to be remanded or withdrawn. Bohem itself must address the grave flaws that have occurred in the permitting process. You're aware of Cox's Ledge? Has that, does that name mean something? So you know then that NOAA declared it a HAPIC, that is a habitat of particular concern. Nonetheless, Bohem continued and authorized the construction on that portion of the outer continental shelf over the objection of Dr. Sean Hayes. And I can refer you to the letter that he wrote on May 13 of 2022, where he said, "The turbine, the impacts from the turbines cannot be mitigated for the 30-year life of the project without full decommissioning." Dire warnings completely ignored. Bohem also failed to consider the cumulative adverse environmental impacts of all these other projects. Astonishingly, astoundingly, Bohem authorized 362 incidental takes of the North Atlantic right whale. That was across the 10 projects that are on the coast. That is more than the 338 individuals that are still considered surviving as of August of '23. This is despite the fact that Bohem admits that the death of just one whale a year can lead to extinction. So there are other compelling reasons to not adopt this resolution, even with your amendment, besides the fact that it doesn't mention the national security risks, again, as the previous speaker mentioned. The Coast Guard has warned of the radar interference. It's been a while since they've warned about it, and threats to their search and rescue operations. You are aware, of course, that Sweden canceled 13 wind projects for similar reasons. They were worried about their national security. Recreational boaters and sailors have documented, they have sworn in all the litigation, that it interferes with their radar and their navigation, and they feel there are safety risks. Your resolution also doesn't, it mentions economic gains, but I must say that if gains are at the expense of the environment or ratepayers or taxpayers, that flies in the face of the legislation that was enacted to exactly prevent those harms. So really, it also doesn't mention the fact that millions of dollars are brought to Rhode Island from fishing and tourism industries, not to mention the fact that fishermen have, again, sworn testimony in the documents that are available in the lawsuits, which I urge you to read. They say that they have lost their fishing and cod and lobster stocks. Charter revenues are down in the habitat, of course, they feel has been destroyed. Your resolution also doesn't mention decommissioning or decommissioning bond. Doesn't talk about cleanup in case of blade failure. You do talk about the price of energy, but I suggest to you that at $98 a megawatt, Revolution's pre-purchase agreement is actually a lot higher than what the U.S. Energy Information Administration projects for nuclear, which is $81 a megawatt hour, and natural gas at $39 a megawatt hour. This also, your resolution also doesn't talk about the need for dispatchable backup energy, which will be always needed when you have wind. Of course, you've also been reading in the papers about how the finances of Orsted are in terrible straits right now. So are you aware that Orsted themselves have canceled projects off of the New Jersey coast and Maryland? Of course, you know its stock has plummeted, and just last week, they needed a $9.4 billion rights issue to stay afloat. The Rhode Island Energy itself has declared that Revolution 2, Revolution Wind 2, was not economically viable. That was in '23. And they said that it would cost ratepayers $3 billion. Now, I ask you, in the state that Orsted finds itself now, who is going to be doing the decommissioning in 30 years? Who's going to pay for them? You talked about cost to ratepayers, taxpayers. Who's going to pay for all them? So not to continue, and I did send you all a rather long email earlier today. May I hand this to you, madam? Thank you so much. But I did send it by email. And I'd just like to conclude by saying that I do think it's premature for you to even take any action on this type of a resolution until all the reviews have been completed. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me just ask you. Matt White? I just want to ask.
I'm sorry.
One question.
Sure.
And is it my understanding that this pause is a result of a federal investigation into various wind companies?
Bohem.
And that the pause is while the investigation occurs, and it's not a cancellation of the project, per se? They're just right now investigating? I mean, is that true?
My understanding from the newspapers is yes, that's what that.
Yeah, so this is, we're not, it's, they're not actually canceling.
No, no, no.
This program. While they're doing, it's a pause while they investigate it so they can get their act together and see what's going on.
That's my understanding, sir.
And they're going through all of them like that, right?
Supposedly.
That's an important point. Because people seem to think, oh, they're coming in and they're going to cancel it. But this is just, let's see what's really going on.
Correct. And so, I mean, how, so how can you be supporting something that could end up being determined to be flawed and that the permits were issued improperly from the inception? How can you be supporting that? They would be illegal, all of it. And they would then have to be taken down. Thank you.
Hi, I bet you everybody's tired.
Not yet.
Okay, good.
You got, 10 minutes.
I'm trying to lie these eyes up.
Take us to the limit, Karen.
So Portsmouth Town Council.
We are going to stop at 11 o'clock.
Karen Gleason, 63 Mathis Soy at Portsmouth, Rhode Island. To the Portsmouth Town Council, President Mr. Hamilton, Vice President Mr. Gleason, and fellow other council members. I'm just going to read this because it's going to be a lot easier. I'm writing regarding the proposed resolution on the new business of the Portsmouth Town Council, which requests that the U.S. Bureau of Ocean and Energy Management, Bohem, cancel those stop-work order issued to the Revolution Wind project. I believe the council is not in a position to make such a request to Bohem as the council is not adequately informed about Revolution Wind, nor are the residents of Portsmouth. I think you just learned a lot of things from the last two speakers. It is the council's obligation to gather as much information as possible regarding the litigation issues currently before Bohem. We, the public, demand that of you. Bohem and other federal agencies are currently under presidential executive orders to review and investigate the adequacy of the record of determination for Revolution Wind Energy Project to proceed. Revolution Wind is not alone in this, as you've heard, as other wind companies are being reviewed for similar reasons, including South Coast Wind. Allegations have been made that the previous federal administration failed to follow federal laws and grant them permits to offshore wind companies, including Revolution Wind. These allegations have been brought to the attention of the current Department of the Interior, as well as the Department of Defense, as well as Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Transportation. Allegedly, Bohem's environmental impact statement, the EIS, the National Marine Fisheries Biological Opinion, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Section 404 permit are not in accordance with the federal statutes and regulations. Under the previous federal administration, these agencies allegedly violated the Administrative Procedure Act, APA, the Outer Continental Shelf Lands Act, OCSLA, the Endangered Species Act, the Marine Mammal Protection Act, the Clean Water Act, and the National Historic Preservation Act, and the National Environmental Policy Act. That's quite a long list of allegations against various federal agencies regarding the permitting of several offshore wind companies, including Revolution Wind, in the Biden administration. Based on the claims in pending litigation, thorough investigations certainly seem to be justifiable and appropriate to protect the health and safety of the public and the environment. Let's not forget the ocean. In addition, the federal government has identified national security that must be addressed prior to proceeding. Suppose the results of an investigation determine that our national security and the security of the state of Rhode Island, including our town of Portsmouth, are at risk. In that case, the Portsmouth Town Council is not acting in good faith if it puts the cart before the horse, if they do not wait for the results of the investigation. As council members, you have an obligation to protect our residents, and I urge you to fulfill this obligation by denying this resolution. Further, I'm almost done. The proposed resolution mentions providing Rhode Island reliable power at competitive rates in the first whereas paragraph. In my opinion, this statement primarily refers to the more reliable gas-fired and nuclear power generators, not offshore wind. Wind energy is intermittent and unreliable, and its cost is significantly higher than that of any other source of power generation because additional sources of power are needed and added to keep the grid running steadily. Otherwise, blackouts could occur. The proposed resolution also mentions infrastructure in the fourth paragraph without providing specific details. If infrastructure includes developing a battery storage area, full disclosure is warranted to our residents. I caution all town councilors to look into battery and energy storage systems, otherwise known as B-E-S-S, which are typically added to offshore wind power generators. These large systems carry potential health and safety risks to neighborhoods, to our schools and businesses in the event, if, of, sorry, in the event of an explosion or fire. Typically, these types of fires cannot be easily extinguished by local fire departments, and they often have to burn out, which can take several hours or days. Burning batteries release heavy toxins, and immediate evacuations are necessary. Due to all the concerns I mentioned above, I respectfully urge the town council to deny this resolution tonight. Additionally, I encourage the town councils to start studying the topic even further and obtain the latest information regarding pros and cons of wind energy and other alternative, reliable, and cheaper forms of power generation. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could put my letter in. Up to the minute. Thank you.
So we got about 10 minutes left. Mr. Peter, how are you?
Peter, it's 80 Armard Avenue. What I want to bring up is to start with, they first wanted to come up the other bay, and the Navy told them no because it would be threats. And they don't want this out there because they can actually, the enemy can bring submarines in there, and we won't know they're there. And half of this company is owned by China. You understand that? Enemy. And they're putting something out there that can bring something in to attack a Navy base or even the submarine company down in Connecticut. That's a threat. This is no joke. Half of that company is owned by China. How many of you realize that China is our enemy? We don't want that. And when they want to come out that bay, the Navy said no. Did anybody push them and say, yes, they can? When they wanted to come in Little Compton? Little Compton told, no, you're not coming in. And they stopped. But nobody has told them they can't come up this bay. The only person, excuse me, don't interrupt me.
I'm going to interrupt you because we're not talking about that project. We're talking about Revolution.
Yes, we are talking about that project.
We are not. We are talking about.
We're ignoring that project, sir.
We are not talking about that.
This town needs to tell them they can't come up here.
This is a different project. It's a different, it's not on the agenda, please.
Get together. Say no. We don't want them up here. That whole bay they're going to come up is contaminated, seriously contaminated. And those facts have been brought up when we've had meetings at the schools, especially from when coal was burnt. That whole bay, when they start digging it up, all that poison's coming back up. And it's not going out there, it's over. Maybe a little bit, but the tides are going to push it all back up again. And it's going to stay here and be risen. Have you, do you realize that? Excuse me, Mr., do you realize that?
I'm not going to respond anymore because we're not speaking of that project. We are talking about Revolution Wind.
Because you're trying to ignore it.
It's not the agenda.
Don't come into this town.
I can't respond to you because it's not on the agenda.
Right, you can't. Because you're hiding it.
Whatever you want to say, Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
Whatever I want to say.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Don't vote for this. It's no good for us. And by the time it all gets done, our government will be putting at least three or four trillion dollars into this from our tax money. Do you realize that? We're in enough trouble now. We don't need to be putting that much money into that. Do not vote for this.
Welcome back, Senator Jones. Steve DeBoosa.
I, I just want to say that it's important for everybody to look at actual independent research that is peer-reviewed, and I hope that the council will be able to do that to verify the things that were being said tonight. Because frankly, I don't believe that a lot of things are supported by peer-reviewed research. So thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
I wasn't going to talk about this issue, quite frankly.
That's the third time you've said that tonight.
Second, second, second time, Mr. Hamilton. The current office holder has declared the scam of the century is wind and solar power. On 8/9/2025, as reported, over 500 rallygoers marched on the Brooklyn Bridge protesting New York Governor Kathy Henchel's decision to allow the Oklahoma National Gas Company, Williams Corp., to have a new pipeline into New York State. This was a capitulation to that administration's. What they did is they dropped their opposition to block wind farms off of the New York coast. So I said to myself on August 22, when the Trump administration stopped the 80% completed Revolution Wind project, I said, hmm, what's he doing? What's he want? The guy wants something from us. We're probably going to get this project. I happen to support nuclear power. I happen to support solar power, and I do support wind power. It's anticipated, as you well know, that over 300,000 homes are going to have this new energy. I'm thinking my home's going to get this. A lot of people are making decisions based on this, this new power source. Is it going to have to be augmented with something else? Sure it is. Everybody knows that. We know there's going to have to be some sort of power source that's going to have to augment it when the wind isn't working. But it's important to know that this, this service will help us. I strongly support you in your resolution. And as far as some of the signs we're listening, I can't help but say, I've also looked at a lot of it. It's something I do. And quite frankly, she's wrong. Thank you.
R. Mcgough, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Michelle McGough, 58 Comerid Drive. And so I am here, and I want to thank Councilman Piero for introducing this resolution. I just want to remind this council, you've heard a lot about the hundreds of pages, the thousands of pages that they've read. Did you read this study? Did you read this study? This project that is 80% complete and is going to sit out there in the ocean, whether it is activated or not, is still there. But I want to remind everyone that it is out there and 80% complete because it went through the approval process already. No one in, I, I, I shouldn't say no one, maybe some people do, but I don't expect you to be experts in climatology. I don't expect you to be experts on whale migration patterns. I don't expect you to be experts in the fisheries. I expect that from the people who had to review all of the applications for this process. That's their job. That's their background. That's their experience and their education. That's what they were there to do. And they spent years evaluating all of that data. And so what I'm asked, what, what I would like for this council to do is to support the resolution because that process has already been completed. I'm a big fan of process. And Mary, I appreciate that you talked about that earlier. I think when there is a process that's been followed, I think we have to respect that. And the fact that this is being, has been blocked is at the signature, at the signing of a pen of one person in this administration that started this ball rolling. But that shouldn't negate the years of expertise review that was completed prior to this project. And so I just want to bring it back to what this means. This means that we have a project that is 80% completed for a project that would provide power to 350,000 homes. It's already built. Let's just support a resolution to encourage its functionality so that it doesn't sit out there wasted and falling apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All of those thousands of pages, they never talked about a broken blade. So I just throw that out there as a really small missed opportunity that all those drill corps experts looked at. And sometimes, we just need to think about a few more minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Piero. We have a resolution on your behalf to the council that has been amended to
Reflect that language.
Yes, reflect the language of finishing what is currently partially finished. It's so vague that it's vague. We need a motion to either pass said resolution or not, and then we can vote, and then we can just about go home.
How is it going to, how is it going to read?
Can you read back what we added in there about the 40, that partially completed? It's going to be underneath the now forebear resolved, and it's going to be the Revolution Wind Project and allow development to continue on.
Let her read it, Karen.
Let me try to read it. With already existing and partially completed wind turbines?
Without further delay.
Without further delay.
So did you see where that is?
Yeah, so we don't mention anything like 47 or anything like that?
No, we don't.
No, I, I think that's safer just to say
I, I, I don't know if it's 47, I don't know if it's 45, I don't know if it's 51.
Jen, can you just read it one more time, please?
Can you read the whole paragraph as amended, please?
Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth Town Council respectfully urges the U.S. Bureau of Ocean Energy Management to rescind the stop work order issued to the Wind Revolution, Revolution Wind Project and allow development to continue with already existing and partially completed wind turbines without further delay, and?
That's basically, though, saying what it already says, correct?
Except if they don't have towers built, or haven't driven pylons, or whatever the heck they're doing it, for 15 or 16 of them, then they stop. They don't do those. If there's one that has a tower built and the blades or the nacelle have to go up, they can finish that one, but don't finish anything, don't start any new ones. So we need a motion to approve?
So.
Edit. Okay. Can you say that into a microphone with the light on, please?
I thought it was on. Moved as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second to take it to vote.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gleason.
I, I personally think that this is a party kind of thing here, that other towns, primarily those of our primary party that run Rhode Island, will be asked to endorse. If there's a process that was completed in the past, and it was done properly, then what is the worry? Why are we pushing this resolution that we have to get these back on right now? It hasn't been, hasn't been told it's canceled. It's just we're asking to take a look at it, or the government is asking. I'm not asking. So just putting this resolution through, to me, is premature. I would also, if I was to support this, in the first whereas, where it talks about the town of Portsmouth supporting efforts to expand energy resources that will provide Rhode Island's with reliable power, I would actually eliminate the word reliable because that's how I feel about wind. It doesn't, it's not a constant generator, right? Reliable goes with a gas-powered, gas-fired power plant. We used to have them. They're out of vogue right now, for some reason, because of the greenhouse gas emissions that we are saying are the worst things in the world now. We've eliminated all our primary power plants that were baseloaded, and they were actually mandated to run. Every wind turbine that will ever fail out there, nobody's going to say, you got to, you got to bring in your boat from Norway and fix this right now because we need that 3.5 megawatts. It's not going to happen. It's not a reliable power source. Yes, when it produces, it's producing electricity at 30 to 40% of the time. In the real world, a nuclear plant, or a coal-fired, God forbid that word, coal, which I'm not saying I support, but any kind of baseloaded power plant, they're in the 95% category. They were mandated to run. We have this whole thing about reliable power. It is not reliable, in my opinion. So I, I think the whole thing is premature. I think we're going to get our answer, saying that we support this to the council. I, I would not be able to say this is going to be a unanimous vote by the town of Portsmouth about, about Revolution Wind. I won't be supporting this resolution.
All right. Anyone else? Motion on the floor is to pass the resolution as amended. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. 3-3 and 1. It did not pass. It failed 3-3 and 1. You're welcome. Yes.
Faces are below, are there. Just if that helps. Thank you.
Next up, we have correspondence. We have a letter from Wilson Wheels and a quarterly report from Portsmouth Water Fire. We have a motion to
Motion to receive and place on file.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 7-0. Next up, we have meetings on September 22 and October 14, which is a Tuesday because of the Columbus Day holiday, and October 27. We have no executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion was 3-3 and 1 abstention, so the motion fails. Sandra Abtain. So the motion failed 3-3 and 1.
Thank you.